This.
Yes.
Is this appropriate time, or do you want me to wait?
Does it relate to this?
Well, I guess I'm curious. So my understanding before was that this MMSD project would take 18 months. Is that correct? And so now it's going to take. Is it shortened, or it was supposed to be done in 2021, and now they're saying 2022?
They don't anticipate right now on their project schedule having it completed near the end of 2021, potentially moving into 2022.
Okay, I just. It seemed like a long time before, and if it's extended, you know, so these people are going to be looking out of their windows for, is it a year and a half and seeing a construction site? Is there nothing we can do about this?
Is it Rebecca, is the start delayed and the total project time scheduled the same, or Leanne, my question for you? Or I guess what Kathy's asking, so is the start delayed, but it's the same 12 months or 18 months, or is it now a 24-month schedule?
This is Leanne. The start has been delayed. The overall timeframe of the project has not changed. It is, it is a very complex project. You know, we're looking at a very large pipe that's about 30 feet in the ground. That, that, that's an 18-month project. There's very little that we can do about the timeframe on that.
Okay, thanks. Why don't you go ahead, Rebecca?
Okay. Um, so we're then looking at being able to needing to push back when the village will begin our improvements, because of course we tie into the Edgewood near Surface Collector. So that project needs to be completed in order for us to begin our work. So we had specifically designed the schedule around two years of sewer work in 2022 and 2023. That now pushes that schedule back a year. We were also informed by the Wisconsin Department of Transportation that the Lake Drive reconstruction was being slated for completion 2025 as opposed to 2026. So that schedule impact is specifically with regards to South Oakland pavement replacement, which then bumps it from 2024 until 2026. At the same time, from a financial perspective, we've been monitoring the TIF closure or the TID closure for TID number five. This TID, which includes the area of the Metro Market Parking Garage and the Mosaic Building, is estimated for closure in 2023 or 2025 pending the assessment lawsuit. The TID five project project plan allows funding for street improvements within a half mile of TID five boundaries, which would essentially encompass the North Oakland Avenue Street. The estimate estimated pavement replacement of North Avenue, North Oakland Avenue was 3.1 million. If TIF five funded the North Oakland Avenue improvements, it would save taxpayers about 1.2 million of accumulated interest over a period of time and potentially 225,000 per year over the life of debt service for a project like that, that would then not need to be bonded for through the Village General Operational Fund, but then funded through the TID. So with this information in mind, and the board's desire to always be very fiscally conscious and taking a look at the LRP and how we can accommodate for some of the large projects that we have. The staff and also, you know, coming off of our LRP discussion when the board really emphasized their desire to move forward with improvements on Oakland Avenue. You had asked of us to come back if there are ever changes or options for additional items to consider. So here tonight for Oakland Avenue, we're talking about an option A or option B. Option A would accommodate for a full reconstruction of North and South Oakland Avenue in 2026 and 2027. It would also accommodate for North and South Oakland Avenue having interim major maintenance of an asphalt overlay. This would be similar to the high-impact paving in Milwaukee. And we believe that if full construction, which is essentially everything within the scope of the right-of-way, including sidewalks, curb, roadway was pushed off until 2026, 2027, we would have an ability to come through in 2021 to do that high-impact paving, which would hopefully then get the road through a little bit better condition, which was one of the board's desires for the next several years. Option B would be pavement replacement with spot curb replacement of North Oakland Avenue in 2022. This option B was contemplated to take advantage of funds that would be available through TID five prior to the closure. It would also accommodate for South Oakland interim maintenance of that asphalt overlay in 2021, and then coming back in 2026 for pavement replacement with spot curb replacement of South Oakland. I'm just going to pause here for a second in case there are any questions relative to these two options.
I have a question. If it's President Rozak, I'm sorry. I can wait if someone else is.
I have a question, but go ahead.
Okay. My question is, so for Lake Drive, we were told a certain date that it would be reconstructed. And at the time, we knew the water main underneath was really a bad shape. And so how long has it been between us resurfacing and paying that amount and us now reconstructing? How many years?
It will be seven in 2025.
And what's the typical life of a, of a, of a re not a full reconstruction, but a overlay?
That's dependent on a number of factors. It varies. The type of overlay that we did on that road. I think you could give a range of anywhere from, you know, five years to 15, like I said, dependent on a number of factors.
Because are there any other questions? My, my question is about the asphalt overlay that we're talking about doing. So we, because it's a concrete road, Oakland, we wouldn't be, it's not like a mill run overlay, right? It's not like we're digging up. I mean, it would just have to be the asphalt on top of the concrete. Is that correct?
No, we would still need to mill the concrete because we would need to maintain our drainage. If we were to simply put the asphalt over the existing concrete, we would have some fairly significant drainage issues.
It'd be too high. Yeah, okay. So, so, because yeah, I was, you know, we have the rut there where the bike path is, and so I would like if we're, so how, so is that, so you're going to take off the top layer so there won't be those problems of big holes and ruts?
Not in the short term. You know, the thing I think that we've all experienced with asphalt is it's very susceptible to reflective cracking. So any type of unstable base or material under the new course of asphalt will reflect through within a matter of months to years. So without actually patching the concrete underneath, you'll see that reflected through, I would think within a, you know, a relatively short period of time.
So.
Yeah, just, yeah, just, I just want to finish asking, so, so the, so, so after we do the overlay, so you're saying it's likely that we will still have indentations in the surface of the road, but I'm assuming it'll be less, you know, of a issue than it is now. I mean, how, is that right? I mean, I'm just trying to get a sense of what it's going to look like after the, the asphalt and the overlay.
Sure. Wherever a crack or a joint existed in the concrete pavement, you will eventually see that reflect through the asphalt. It, in some, you know, it might take, if it's a bad, if it's bad under certain conditions, you might see it within a couple of months. Some others might take, you know, a year to a couple of years. Certainly, it will not be, you know, certainly the condition will be better than if you had left it in its current state.
And do we have an idea of the cost to do the overlay?
We did some estimates based on the the unit prices that the city of Milwaukee got for its high-impact paving project this year. Based on those estimates, we think it probably would cost in the range of $600,000 to $700,000 for the, the high-impact paving, the full length of Oakland Avenue from Edgewood to Pasglen now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, President Rozak, did you have?
I did. Thank you so much. So I'm unclear. So since I took office five years ago, it's been very, you guys have been very honest to say that there's a flaw, that, that it was constructed, Oakland Avenue was constructed with a flaw, and that some sort of water seepage, or I'm not sure of the exact technical terms, but caused this crack, and it was a flaw. And so it sounds like we're patching it again. This is the, probably the only time that we are going to have an open TID where we pay one-fourth of the cost. I, what, what is the rationale for not fixing the road? Like actually fixing it rather than patching it?
I don't think that's what we're suggesting under either of these options. In both cases, pavement replacement or full reconstruction, we would certainly look at addressing those drainage issues.
Okay, so if we did full reconstruction, then if we chose as a board, full reconstruction, then what you just said to trustee Amenta may not happen, may not be a month that you'll see the crack again.
It definitely would not. Full reconstruction is a completely different process than the mill and overlay. A full reconstruction, you remove the entire, you remove all the pavement, you remove the curbs, you would be removing the decorative pavers back to the sidewalk, and then you would also be removing the road base and replacing it. At the point that we would consider full reconstruction, I would also strongly recommend water main replacement.
Correct. So my question is, is that what you're recommending?
We're.
I am.
Eventually. Yeah. I don't have a strong recommendation between pavement replacement and full reconstruction. I would suggest that, you know, your, your curb is in pretty good shape. If you get into full reconstruction, then you're talking replacement and of all of your streetscape, which is very involved, and it's very impactful on businesses.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but so is Lake Drive. I mean, we're doing full reconstruction, and we just, we just did a lot of streetscaping and, and crosswalks and stuff. I just, in my opinion, I'll just state it once. I see no value in passing up the opportunity to fix the road for one-fourth of the cost. I don't know that we'll ever have that chance again, and I, it may be an inconvenience, but in the, in the long run, we need to fix the road. And I understand that there's some, you know, that when we put the development in, we did a lot of streetscaping through the TIF, and I'm fine tearing that up, just as I'm fine tearing up Lake Drive. It's similar to me, so I, but anyways, my.
So, so you're in favor of option B?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Go, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Carpenter.
That's okay. Can I just clarify? Does the, um, does using some of the, well, so, sorry, two questions. Like, are we just, if we're going with option B, then four years later, we're going to, I mean, realistically, how long do you think that's going to last and be sufficient?
Maybe a month.
Do you mean the asphalt, the asphalt part? Yeah, Leanne?
Yeah, as I said earlier, that, that's dependent on a number of factors. It could last five years, it could last 15 years. It's, I'm not in a position right now without some further study and engineering opinion to predict that.
Because I, I think like what, for me, without understanding that it, it sort of feels like we're spending good money after bad. And, you know, it's still going to be more than half a million dollars to do that, so. You know, I just wonder if it, you know, it's not ideal to wait until 2026, but is, is there, you know, is there anything that we can, I don't know, I just wonder if that makes, I guess I'm questioning if that makes sense for option B.
And I would like to hear from Rebecca at some point.
Well, I mean, option B is replace is doing, I mean, there's difference between the overlay, which is kind of a patch thing to get us through, like we did for Lake Drive. Option B is replacement, so it's doing the road. As I understand it, tell me if I'm wrong, it's doing the road from Capital North, so that part's done, 2022. We'd only be doing the asphalt on the South Oakland part, and then we'd get to South Oakland in 2026. So versus option A, which is doing the asphalt on the whole thing, and then doing full recon, then doing the reconstruction actually on North and South, and, but, but doing the full reconstruction curbs and gutters too. So, I mean, we're, the both options have some asphalt.
I have a question, a couple of questions. So the reason we're looking at option B, I think we all agree that Capital South on Oakland is much worse than Capital North, correct?
Right.
But we're only in this position because of TID five, right?
Right, right.
Using TID five to redo Oakland from Capital North could save us 1.2 or $3 million in interest. So the question is, do we want to go with B to save that money, but on the same hand, on the other hand, we are going to spend 600,000 to put a temporary asphalt layer on Oakland south of Capital. Do we need it? I'm just saying, I mean, I don't know, I feel, you know, Lake Drive is beautiful now. It's been done, what, one or two years? And now we find out the state decides, okay, we're ready to do your streets sooner. So we just went through this Lake Drive nightmare, you know, arterial construction, and my personal opinion is they got new painting on Lake Drive south of Edgewood and thought, why are we repainting when the, the street is terrible and people complain? So now suddenly it's moved up a year. I have no insight, but anyway, here we sit. The state's project deciding to move Lake Drive forward, and we have this TID that comes, you know, we, if we, I mean, it makes sense financially to use it, but I'm wondering, if we go with option B, can we suffer through South Oakland without a maintenance of asphalt overlay in 2021 and save over a half a million dollars?
That's a good question. Leanne?
Rebecca? I'm sorry. I just like to clarify the numbers. That $600,000 to $7,000 range I gave you was for the full length of Oakland Avenue from Edgewood past Glendale, not just Oakland South. So that, um, that would probably be in the $200,000 to $325,000 range, just for the south portion of Oakland Avenue.
I just wonder if residents would rather have us patched for five years than go through a full-on reconstruction five years after we do it, you know, it's, the disruption is huge.
There really is no ability any longer to patch Oakland Avenue. We're talking either a mill and overlay or full concrete panel replacements.
Can I chime in for one second?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm thinking north, actually, because we talked about south, and I know that's the worst, but north is where that big, huge crack is and where the failure is, from my understanding. There's never going to be a time where we're going to pay one-fourth of the cost to repair that. And so I'm fiscally conservative, and I under, and I'm a business. And so I understand the disruption that the businesses will go through, especially during this hard time. But to, to patch it or overlay it, or whatever you want to call it, and a couple of years later, keep doing the same thing, and then eventually when we go to fix it, we're going to pay 100% of the cost. So I would like to hear from Rebecca, because I feel like and from an administrative point of view, fiscally, just fiscally, it makes 100% like it sense in my mind to utilize the TIF to do it. We have one year left, or maybe two, and if we don't do it now, we lose that opportunity, and that's a lot of money for the taxpayers. That's a lot.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Warren, did you have a question?
I just wanted to hear.
You need to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, trustee Amenta. I'm not going to reiterate a lot of the points that have been made, but I agree with the fact that option B presents us with a good opportunity, given that, given the TID funds there. And it seems, you know, from where I'm sitting, it makes a lot of sense to go with option B and have that pavement replaced on South Oakland. That's in, last time I drove down there, it was in really bad shape, and, and I just don't think that that's something that can wait. So, um, you know, without, without piling on in terms of redundancy, I am, I am supportive of option B in this circumstance.
Including the asphalt. Okay. Rebecca, is there more of your presentation, or is this?
No, I, I have more, but I wanted to make sure that we were clarifying.
I don't want to, yeah, I don't want to cut you off, so.
I just wanted to know your opinion.
Well, I, I think that of the trustees who have spoken so far, it's very clear the, the financial benefit that the village would receive by utilization of TID five funds for purposes of North Oakland Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Why don't you go on with your, I mean, I do want to give you a chance to get all the way through your presentation.
Quick, David, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
So the TIF, TID five can be used all the way from Capital to Kensington, is that correct?
Actually, past, I would argue past Kensington, through that intersection. Ideally, the village limits.
All the way to the Whitefish Bay border.
Correct.
Would be used. Okay, thank you.
And, and just as we're talking about North Oakland, you know, part of some aspects of North Oakland that are, you know, clear in my mind, because they were recommendations put forth in the Parking and Transportation Study, were some improvements to that roadway for safety aspects that the consultant had recommended, should improvements be made to that road. One was in light at the intersection of Kensington and Oakland, which continues to receive a significant amount of comments from the public. And the other was also some improvements around the Metro Market for purposes of pedestrian crossing that have been identified and recommended, of which we'd also have an ability to cover within the scope of this project. Okay, hearing that, I'm going to continue to the next slide. So I apologize, this is a lot of information, but this is kind of a graphic representation of what our current LRP schedule is by year. The parts that I called out in red are specifically related to some of the schedule changes that have been brought on by MMSD pushing their project back a year, and then Lake Drive moving their project up a year. So for me, it was helpful, and it may not be helpful for you, but this was also included within the scope of your packet, and it just kind of outlined how these projects would change in the scope of all of the other construction projects that we will also have ongoing at the time. So again, the red is simply those that were highlighted this evening, so essentially North Oakland, South Oakland, WISDOT improvements, and how those changes take place from year to year. But then it also reflects that work in light of all of the other work that would continue to take place. We went through the schedule in great detail in May when we went through the long-range financial plan and the projects, but I just wanted to chart it, to represent it here. We don't have to spend a lot of time on it, but this may be useful if we have additional questions and come back to looking at some of the year.
Rebecca, can I just point out, so your last slide, A was do full reconstruction in 26, 27, so just want to point out that A is now two and B is one.
Yes, my apologies. That, that was, I should have listed it in the other fashion.
That's, that's okay. I just, because they were like, I just wanted to point that out to everybody, because I didn't want people to get confused, but, okay, go ahead. Does anyone have questions on this slide, or are we good? Sorry.
I did have a question about what is the impact to the taxpayers by taking this money out of the TID and using it for the roadway financially, as opposed to closing it and, and putting that money back into the tax equation?
I know that Mark has had his hand raised. I don't know if he knows that answer off the top of his head. I can't see him on my screen right now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Oh, great. Well, the, the TID five district, the, the increment collective there is from all the underlying taxing bodies, which is, again, from a comparative perspective, you know, we, we really get to leverage 100% of the, the increment value of this project's completed through TID five as opposed to only harnessing 25% of the taxing value if we were to fund it through the village's debt service. At the end of the day, it'll probably move the TID closure date one to two years, depending on the outcome of the assessment challenge. And before that, incremental values released to the general assessed values. I don't have a lot of numbers in front of me, but I can certainly say I, I think that from the municipal perspective, you know, that is going to be a pretty strong fiscal advantage to the taxpayers to get that done with the TID, TID value and avoid the debt service and avoid the interest cost, because this can be cash-funded. The money's there. So we're going to save 1.2 million in interest cost just there alone. We're going to decrease the village's debt service payments compared to what was in the long-range plan by about $225,000 per year. So I think it would be a, a pretty positive fiscal impact. Either way, you have to spend the money to complete the project, so in that regard, it's, it's neutral to the taxpayers as a whole. But it really has some advantages, because that, that money is, is readily available and, and ready to go. Thank you.
How much is riding on the disposition of this assessment case? Is there, can we put a price on it, or how do we, can how do I get my head around the, how this case, the disposition of this case?
The, the short answer is it, it's such a broad development. Obviously, it would be a significant incremental change, but the current projections would suggest that if, even if we had a but the current projections would suggest that if, even if we had a total lack of defense of our assessed values, the TID district would still close in 2025, even if we did lose the assessment challenge. So again, a fairly modest impact as far as the TID closure, because, because of the mosaic being as part of that project as well.
Mark, what is the, you know, what is the annual increment for that TID? How many years, you know, will it take to pay for this project in relation to that increment?
Well, if the project goes 3 million, it would probably take a year and a half. Again, it's all dependent on if the assessment challenge has prevailed, or, or, or.
Assuming, assuming it's not.
Then maybe it's two years.
Okay, so the TID would stay open an extra two years in order for us to be able to fund this road?
That's correct.
I mean, I think, I think that, you know, when the TID closes, the assessed value for the village will go up, so tax rates can go down, but it would probably be not a huge, it's not going to be hundreds of dollars to people when the TID, when this TID closes. And the other part about the school, I mean, the school is 45, 50%. So the value goes up, but because of state equalization funding, you know, us becoming, having a higher assessed value means the state just takes eight, so that's, that's a neutral. Eventually, that just becomes neutral, so, you know. I would agree that it's, it's probably a financially wise thing to try to use the TID. Does anybody else have questions on this slide?
I just wanted to, Jenny's iPhone, can you just mute yourself, please? Jenny's iPhone.
Does anyone have questions?
I just, I just have one question. In 2025, the current long-range schedule talks about the Oakland meter pit reconstruction, and maybe I'm just missing it, but where does that move to in the new option one or option two?
Great question. One of the things that as a staff, and I'll allow, you know, Joel and Leanne to pipe in, but one of the things that we had discussed at least last week is that as we look to the future and the reconstruction of Edgewood, and the timing of that, we'd want to evaluate it in conjunction with the timing of some other projects. Essentially, we can get in to do Oakland, the Oakland meter pit at any time, because it's going to be placed outside of the roadway. And so, you know, it's something that we're going to want to take a look at the schedule and where we're also having disruption because of construction, so that we're, we're not deterring, diverting traffic into areas that are otherwise going to be disrupted. So we recognize that we didn't slot it into a year, but we're hoping to kind of learn more. As we, as we know, which is why we're here tonight, the, the schedule is fluid. So we would really look to try to slot that and provide you with a recommendation for next year's review of the LRP.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we're good to go and move on.
Great, okay. So next topic that we wanted to cover was the construction coordinator position. As we had started out the conversation, we reflected on the fact that there are 20 capital construction projects that are overseen by DPW within the scope of this LRP. And the reason why I reflect on that is because when I, when I came to the village, it was at that time that the, the village had started to schedule projects that now weren't occurring every other year. There was a schedule, we tried to have an off-year design, and then a year of construction and an off-year design to try to accommodate projects. As we look at our schedule and how it's rolling out, there's major construction every year in some area of the village stacked on top of each other. So we recognize that within the LRP project schedule coming up. Historically, construction inspection has been contracted to a local engineering firm. You know, this approach has served the village well, and use of the contract inspection has, you know, enhanced the level of expertise at the needed time, and in the past, had provided a cost savings to us over a full-time employee. Since 2012, the emphasis on these infrastructure improvements has increased in what's the number and the frequency of projects which require daily inspection duties. In addition, we have the biennial road programs consistently scheduled, alleys, water main relays for lateral rehabilitations and special projects. And it means that the village is contracting for this inspection on an annual basis. After going through the last several years of having a construction inspection person on a contracted basis, we have also recognized the level of resident interaction and time that is not only taken up by the person doing the inspections, but that bleeds over into the administrative staff, because the person doing the inspections is only doing inspections in the field primarily, and less focused on the, on the overall project management and those resident interactions. Since 2014, we did a look back to see that the value of the inspection contracts have totaled over $1 million. And on average, we're spending about $155,000 annually to contract that service. As you know, in 2019, we had discussed during the, through the LRP project schedule discussion, the concept of bringing on a full-time employee for purposes of doing construction inspection, but then also project managing these larger infrastructure projects, and what the benefits of that may be. This past year, we went out and had NOVAC perform an organizational study on the Public Works Department. And one of their recommendations from that study, based upon looking at our project workload and how we're deploying, was the creation of an engineering or technician construction inspector position. It would allow the village to reduce the contracted cost for engineering inspection. It wouldn't eliminate it completely, because as with all construction, specialized sewer and tunneling, they would require specific state certifications that we would outsource for. But the majority done during our peak season would then be done in-house and responsible for those construction sites, and really providing us with more of a safeguard to the quality of the, the large value of capital infrastructure improvements that are being put into the ground. It was suggested that the position have more oversight and project management assistance and supplement and complement the work under the scope of the assistant director's capacity. Staff, after reviewing this, and other municipalities and the positions and position description and job duties, believes that an appropriate title for the position would be construction coordinator. The report from NOVAC also recommended that within the scope of this position, should a full-time position be brought on staff, that that position be designated to assist with the development of the department's asset management program. And that through the scope of the organizational study was viewed as an important step to determine the department's service needs, and in maximizing our useful life of village investments. But it also requires someone dedicated to monitoring that, ensuring that it's logged correctly and continues to support the DPW management. This would also include the management of the GIS database, as well as as-built construction information. The position would report to the DPW director, who would allocate work appropriately between the construction coordinator and the assistant director. The position would have a salary, whoop, I apologize, I forgot to flip my screen.
Rebecca, I'll just hit 717. I'm just going to let you know that.
Oh, so also, thank you so much for letting me know. So I will move up a little in this discussion. In the packet.
I think people have questions about the position, so.
Okay.
Can we, I, if you could go back a slide.
Sure.
Since 2012, I mean, my recollection is we've done alternate, the same thing that was always on. Even years we've done major reconstruction projects, and odd years we've done sidewalks, alleys, that kind of thing. So I don't, I'm, I'm not understanding that we've been do, I mean, it seems like we've been doing the exact same thing since 20. We have discussed in the next five to seven years of doing more, but we, I, I don't understand why we're saying we've done more since 2012.
When we, am I on mute? Can you hear me? Okay. And I would be happy to defer also to Leanne, who'd be able to comment on it. But before all of the major sewer work that started in 2010, there was decades that the village had very little large capital construction projects. When we take a look at our investment over, I want to say the last 30 years, we, we actually highlighted it within the scope of the village manager's memo last year or the year before in graph format, in terms of how much money we've expended on capital projects. And I think for the village, historically, that 2010 flood, which led us into a significant aggressive and really positive sewer improvements for the community, caused an uptick in the, the amount of construction that we did proceed with. And you are correct, trustee Amenta. During that timeframe, I believe, and Leanne can correct me, but there was construction every other year. I believe shortly after you came on board as a trustee, we also added in the alley improvement program that wasn't always included within the scope of the LRP, which was another addition. And that has led us to now, which were, as you had said, looking forward to now, large capital projects every year. And I'll let Leanne comment if she has any other.
I'd like to, do board members have questions about this position? And I, I suspect they do. Yes. Oh, trustee Stoka Branda, then trustee Warren.
So obviously, we're in a recession, and people are unemployed and on furloughs and getting unemployment. So people are expensive. So this, this would be a serious, and I would have to think, okay, people in various neighborhoods would like to have more public safety, right? So do we add a police officer, or do we add an, you know, a construction coordinator? Do we currently have any engineers on staff at the DPW, civil engineer?
No, we do not.
And is that common? For a village of our size, I just wonder, we're, we're looking here for someone with an associate's degree. I just wonder, at that point, don't we want a full-fledged civil engineer? I don't see any GIS training, credits, experience. I thought that was part of this job. And the other thing is the DPW study, I thought, showed deficiencies in our contracts. So I'm guessing that's the one, that's something this person would do, would be trying to get us a better deal. The study showed that we should be able to get some better deals on some of our contracts. So this is just a hard sell for me at this time. I understand we're doing a lot, and I guess my preference would be to spread the projects out and work with what we've got, instead of adding a person. It's a huge commitment. The benefits of $40,000 a year for someone who's got an associate degree. I also wonder, how would your job description, Leanne, change? And how would Joel's change with this addition of the staff member?
Okay, there were a number of questions in there. So I'm, at this point, I know that Tyler and Joel, who are both heavily engaged and working on that description, I'm going to ask maybe Tyler to start addressing some of, Kathy, some of your first questions relative to the, the experience. And that's in there. Tyler, are you still on the call?
Yeah, I'm here. I just want to make sure the board is aware that, and the public on the call is aware that with the, the cost, it's not like we would be increasing the costs. We're taking the cost that would have been built into the capital projects and transferring it over to personnel costs. So I just want to make sure that, that understanding, so it's not like we're adding $100,000 of new expenses. These expenses have already been allocated as part of the projects. So we're just building that into our organization structure and not having a contracted person do that. So I, I don't know if that, that made sense or not, but I just want to make sure that we hit that point. With the job description, I mean, yeah, these are our minimums, minimum requirements, where, you know, we, we took a look at a few different municipalities our size. Some municipalities have this structured, Whitefish Bay was one, Germantown was another one that we looked at, that, that have this position built into their organization structure. We don't have anyone with any engineering background right now. So that would be a nice service for DPW, or opportunity for DPW to at least have someone with some kind of engineering background on staff. And, you know, there's a lot of times that we get, you know, certain preliminary questions that require some kind of engineering background. So instead of always needing to take that to a contractor, having someone on staff to be able to answer those questions would certainly be helpful. Joel, do you want to jump in? Is there anything that you want, this is going to be a, a big help to both Leanne and Joel, but especially Joel. I think there's going to be a nice customer service level aspect of this position too, because they're going to be the one that will be working directly with some residents on some questions. Like I know, for example, we talked about the sidewalk replacement program. But Joel, any, any comments you want to make about the job description?
Hi, can y'all hear me? Yeah, so really what we're talking about here is replacing a contracted field personnel with a village personnel. So when I look at, you know, how this would change my, you know, some of the duties of myself, you know, really, you know, the advantage is that you are not retraining a new individual every project. And when I say training, I mean, not necessarily the technical aspects of, of the field work. It's the training the shorewood way. And, you know, there's certain things that we demand of our field staff that aren't necessarily demanded of in other communities. You know, and we go through a project with a, a field inspector, and, you know, it takes some time to get acclimated to the things that we're expecting of that field person. And currently, you know, we have multiple projects, and we're, we're awarding those projects to different engineering firms. Oftentimes, we're getting new individuals, project after project. I have a new field personnel that I have to go through that process with. And, you know, I think, you know, I guess the advantage of bringing it in-house is that, you know, you go through that process once. And, you know, I, I do think, like Tyler said, and I think a customer service level, I think that would, you know, something that is becoming, you know, increasingly, I get like a larger factor on projects, and it's, you know, taking up a lot of our, our time and effort to deal with those type of issues.
So, so Joel, we would still have the village engineer, Strand would, or some other contractor would still be the village engineer? This, this position doesn't replace that?
David, you're, trustee Amenta, you're correct. We would still have the village engineer create plans and specifications for our projects. And once those are done and out to bid, then ultimately, this person then takes over, runs the, some of the pre-construction type of activities that are currently done, and, you know, works with the contractor throughout the project, and works with the residents throughout the projects, and coordinates things with myself. And I, I think I would still, you know, really do the same things I'm doing now. now. But ultimately, it would, you know, hopefully free up some free time for me to spend some time making sure that our own staff is working efficiently and we're doing our own projects cost effectively as well.
Okay. And trustee Warren was first, and I saw trustee Carpenter has her hand up. So trustee Warren, what's your question? And trustee Bachhorst after that.
Thank you trustee Amenta. Couple things. I, I take, I take trustee Stoke Brand's point about, you know, in these times, you want to watch kind of any increase in costs. But it does make sense, you know, what Tyler said to me, you know, we're moving, really move shifting costs here to personnel. And it also makes sense, what Joel was saying that, you know, it makes sense to build institutional knowledge in this space. And I also like the customer aspect that this, that this, that this affords us. My question would be on the funding of it. I was wondering, you gave us two options in the packet and to simplify it's really through, through bonding or operational, or operational expenses, as I understand, or partially through bonding or otherwise fully through operational expenses. I was wondering Rebecca, if you benchmarked how other municipalities tend to pay for this position? Is it under their operational budget or is it paid through, at least in part, by bonds?
I've seen it done both. And that's, that's a discussion that we've had and that Mark and I have had, really for the last two years in talking about this concept. It's truly a policy decision how to do it. Right now, the village is paying for 100% of that cost through the capital projects account. We bond for that payment amount. So, you know, we list out here, I just pulled up the screen, which kind of lists out those two options for you. For our board specifically, I think one of the, the things that was talked about tonight was the concern of not potentially increasing the amount required from the general fund to fund the position. So if you wanted to continue with funding it primarily through capital projects, we've split it up by percentage under option A, approximately 70,000 through those capital projects, and then 30,000 funded through DPW operations. And option B, it's then split through the three primary areas based upon the approximate percentage of work we have associated with our capital projects. And Mark, if you had your time in, you're welcome.
I, I mean, I'm just looking at the time. So I'd like to get through trustee questions. So trustee Carpenter.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. So I do have some, some reservations about moving forward without, with this position without understanding where we land in the budgeting process. So I feel like it's a little premature to make a decision until we've gone through the budgeting process. But I have just a couple other questions. I know we've talked a little bit about cost savings. My, my trepidation is in regards to having the engineer still on staff. I also saw that there was, that this individual would also be available for snow emergencies. So would that potentially lower, could we lower some headcount somewhere else to allocate for, for that? I don't know if that's an option. And would somebody who has an associate's degree and be customer service focused in that, you know, coordinator position be willing to do that as well?
Who can answer that question? Tyler, Joel, Rebecca, somebody?
I, I think the answer Jessica would be, we're not, it would just be another person added to the snow removal rotation. It, it all depends if we get someone that has a CDL or would be willing to do a CDL. We're not sure if that person would or would not. So that's why in the job description, it's not a requirement, but a preference. If they, if we do get someone that either has or willing to get a CDL, that would be an option that we would have another driver in the snow removal program. We also included in the job description, on-call. So they would be part of the on-call rotation, which that would be a really nice help for DPW, because we're a little low on numbers right now on, and who's, who's in that on-call rotation. So providing some assistance there would be helpful.
Okay. And then, is it possible, if we're looking at Strand's contract, to remove specifically their, like, customer service portion of their contract? Like, if we can, if there's a way, I think in my mind, after the budgeting, or some point in the budgeting process, to see that and see, you know, we're spending, I'm making it up, $50,000 and, you know, in customer service and the engineering contract, and we will no longer need funds for that. And those funds would then be allocated to the construction coordinator position. I would feel a little bit differently. I just am really having a hard time as we are going into the budgeting process, knowing already the school district is talking about a 3.9% tax increase. And, and this is, this is forever. So what if, you know, we've just talked about how fluid everything is with, you know, Lake changing to 2025 and making some adjustments on Oakland? Like, what if things change? And what if we don't have the workload that is needed for this person? What, what happens then? That's my, that's my, that's my last question.
Who would like to answer?
Do you want to go to the previous slide again? Because I just want to call it that 100, the, you know, it might be helpful to explain what was part of the $155,000 number. Because that's what we're, that's what we're averaging to pay on construction inspection services per year. Why we're saying with this person, instead of paying the $155,000 in construction inspection fees, where the person would cost about $100,000 plus a few grant for specialized services. So in the end, we think, you know, this could be a nice win-win that the village not only receives some benefit services from a personnel level, but we could also see some cost savings.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Bachhorst, you had some questions?
Yep, thank you. So I appreciate that we're using the organizational study data that we paid a good amount of money on to help inform this decision. To me, I will just reiterate and agree with what trustee Warren said, and also backing up on what Tyler had just said. So thank you for clarifying. So it's rare that we can actually save money and increase communication as well as create, increase our ability in oversight and everything else, and transparency and whatnot. So I appreciate that we are bringing this position in-house and at the same time, saving money. So I understand that there are discussions surrounding budget, et cetera, but with the project load that we have, and we all know that we do have, as Rebecca mentioned earlier in this meeting, we do have a pretty robust capital project plan. And yes, there was a structural deficit or a deficit in a lot of the things. We've inherited a lot, and this board has. Since I've been on 2013, we've done an aggressive plan and we're, we're continuing to make up for the lack of infrastructural improvements that were, were done in the past. So as a board member, I do not have a problem with this. I see that we're, A, saving money, like I said, B, we're doing what the consultants have recommended, and C, we are improving customer service for our, for our population, which in Shorewood, as we all know, is very important. And people do have a high level of expectation regarding what they're getting from our local municipality. And it sounds to me like this is doing all of the things that all of us have agreed that we do need here in Shorewood. So I have no problem making a decision on this as well. So I don't think, I, I don't, I mean, I understand that we are coming into budget season, but this is, we're actually saving money. And we're not looking to eliminate this, these items. We either have to pay an outside service, $155,000 per year, or internally 105 or whatever. So.
Thank you. I just, I, I have a question. I know that this position would, we would not need to hire all the, the same level of construct, outside construction inspectors. But from reading the memo, it seems like we're, there still would be some outside inspection we would need. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I, I mean, is it, I, I don't know, I would, before making a decision on this, I would appreciate, you know, just having things a little more buttoned down about where the funding is going to come from, whether it will be fully offset by savings on contract costs or may, you know, maybe or maybe not, or, you know. So I would appreciate a little more detail on that. But I do want to move on to, I mean, we're, we're about an hour, and Rebecca, I know you have some actions you wanted us to take. I mean, but I don't want to cut off if other people have questions or comments. But we should move on to making some motions and making some decisions. So any final comments before we move on to that?
I, I have just a few. First, you're going to be paying these costs irregardless of whether you move forward with the position or not. So you will be expending them. It's just a matter of, of how it's going to get moved forward. You have been paying them for the last several years. In 2019, operationally, your staff came and said, this would be a more, a better way to operationally deploy to facilitate these capital construction projects. We then hired a consultant to review our DPW department. And they as well came forward as one of their top recommendations to deploy this because they, they understood that there's not a way for us to focus on other aspects of our operation and how we prepare for the future unless this can be done in a more effective way. So I leave you with that. I, I'm coming to you with a managerial recommendation. We have a consultant providing a professional recommendation. We will move forward and deploy in a manner of which the boys, the board so chooses to do. If this is not the route, we will be recommending that you go out for a request for qualifications to hire on a firm to do this for you for the next several years.
I saw trustee Ersin Kada's hand up. Did you have a question?
Oh, no, I just want to make a final comment that I think this is just a no-brainer. I, you can see that there'd be savings here. And to bring somebody in internally and to have them, you know, like Joel said, train them up in the Shorewood way, just makes complete sense. To have somebody that has a little bit more longevity and investment into our own community is, is a win for us on top of saving a little bit of money here. I, I just think this is, this is a no-brainer.
Thank you. I did, if there aren't any more comments, I did see some proposed motions. One is on the construction coordinator staff position and job description, and to budget for the staff position. We don't, I could take any motions on that or on the, or on the options we've already discussed around Oakland Avenue. So.
So we, we identified some possible motions for the board to consider. We have them in, in order of how we would need to proceed based upon how the board directed. So I, I put up on your screen the first one, which is exactly what's within the memo. If you choose to move forward with the position, this is the type of information we would need to hear from you in order to execute a, a policy direction, decision, decision to begin incorporating that within to the budget.
Okay, it can, is, I mean, I'm not sure what the, the, creating this position has to do with our decision on the long-range financial plan. I mean, they're separate. We can do the long-range financial plan with an in-house construction inspector or contract construction inspection. So, and I, and I think, in my opinion, trustee Carpenter raised a good point about, is this not a kind of decision we should make in the context of budget discussion? So why, why, I guess my question for you Rebecca is why do we have to move with this particular, I mean, I don't know, if somebody wants to make a motion on this, go ahead. Yes.
Can you hear me? I'm losing it. I don't know how to get back into the meeting.
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. I just wanted to voice my opinion that I'm against this proposal. I think that we've struggled with this for a long time. I do believe every time we come up with a new position, I always ask for five years if we can share a position with another municipality. And we never explore that. Maybe we did this time, and I apologize if I was wrong about that. But before we approve any new full-time position, I've always requested that we explore looking at Milwaukee, talking with Whitefish Bay, talking with other municipalities, Glendale, to see if there's any type of sharing opportunity. I do believe that it's important with the big projects that are coming up for engineering purposes, that we have an engineer full-time. But inspection services, not so much. And so that's my take on it. I just wanted to state that I do not support the proposal.
Are there, does anyone, yeah, I, I'm, anyone can make any motion.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to, what does the motion say in the packet? Then I can reword it. I don't have it in front of me. I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Okay. So, well, I guess if you didn't want to, if you didn't want to create this position, I think you should, we don't have the, I think if someone makes a motion to create it, you can vote against it. Or I, I don't know.
I think trustee Warren has been trying to make a motion.
Did you already make a motion?
I can make a.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion unless someone already has.
All right. President Rosick had the floor, so make a motion.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to deny the hiring of, and can please someone fill it in from the packet.
Meaning not hiring. Deny, deny construction coordinator position. Okay.
Thank you.
You've made that motion. Okay. Is there a second? Okay. I do not hear a second. Trustee Warren, do you have a motion?
I'll, yeah, just, I'll make the motion. I'll move to approve the additional construction coordinator staff position and job description to the Department of Public Works for 2021 and the budget for the staff position consistent with alternative number one from the fiscal notes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Trustee Carpenter?
I just was wondering if, you know, in the explanation from Tyler, I'm not against this particular position. It's just a little bit hard for me to put it into context without the budgeting conversation around it. You know, the, the budgeting process is really so we can kind of lay everything out on the table and see it all at once. And it's been super helpful. So I'm just wondering, is there any way that we can vote on this or move this to our budgeting process?
I think you would have to vote no on this motion and make a motion to consider this position during the budget process. I, and I agree with your position, by the way. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
Is, is, can I just ask Rebecca if there's a reason why we need to approve or not approve it tonight? Is it, is there an urgency?
Great question. One of the reasons we're bringing it to you is because we will accommodate for the, just any decisions made tonight within the scope of the proposed budget coming to you for presentation next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Somebody, trustee Bachhorst, did you have your hand raised?
I did, thank you. So I just want to reiterate that it sounds like we're going to be saving some money. And this is a necessary service regardless of if we have it in-house or externally. So I am going to support this, A, because of the fiscal value that it adds to our budget and our decision-making. And again, anytime that you can bring something outsourced in-house, you have so much more authority over what is happening and so much more control. So I know some people don't want to increase the size of government, but we're either paying a, a full-time staff member here that we can all talk to and see on a regular basis in the community will get to know, or we can spend more money to outsource and give it to a large corporation. So I just wanted to restate that.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Ersin, had a comment?
I would like to add to that as well and say that our village manager, village staff, DPW all recommending this position. And I would hate to go against all of those opinions, you know, on top of us saving money and this being the right thing to do for, for DPW. So.
Any further comments before we vote on the motion?
I have a comment.
Yes, trustee Stoke Brand.
I guess the thing about, you know, it'd be wonderful to have it because our DPW does a wonderful job. And of course, I'm grateful for everything they do. And of course, I'm grateful for everything they do. Thing about adding people is it's not just the salary, it's the benefits package that seems to skyrocket. And the situation in our country with healthcare is such that it increases at least 5% a year. So when, you know, I've heard this phrase tossed around that we're saving money. I guess that's what I need to see more in front of me is a specific, you know, if you anticipate healthcare and pension and disability, everything, the, it's a benefits package that is really what we're looking at here. And so that's my concern about when we have a lot of people unemployed and furloughed that, you know, I just, I don't think this is the right time for us to add a position without looking at the whole budget to Jessica Carpenter, trustee Carpenter's point in the, in this context of patrol officers and other things. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to take final comments so we can vote and move on to the other motions. We're already running late, trustee Backhorst.
Yeah, and the other thing trustee Ursink had mentioned that the staff, our village manager, our DPW, everyone agrees. And also the consulting firm that we spent, what was it, $50,000, $60,000 to do the organizational study also recommended this position. So it seems like we have a lot of experts who are recommending it. And we are going to be spending this amount of money or more regardless on the program. So it's, again, like trustee Ursink said to me, it's a complete no-brainer. And this isn't talking about pitting this against public safety or other people. We're just talking about DPW here. And it's not by doing this are we taking away from any other aspect. This money is going to be spent.
Can I say that I'd like to keep personal comments to a minimum and describing people who might oppose this motion as, as no, as not?
I don't, I don't think that's a personal question.
And it's an attack, and as chair, I'm not going to allow it. Okay, I'd like to move on to the vote. Can the clerk read the motion?
I'd be happy to. Trustee Warren moved to approve the additional construction coordinator staff position and job description to the Department of Public Works for the 2021 budget and to budget for this staff position consistent with alternative number one from the fiscal notes. Seconded by trustee Ursink.
Hey, can you call the roll, please, for the vote?
Oh, sure, sorry. Trustee Amenta.
No.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Carpenter.
No.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee, who's next, trustee Stokebran.
No.
President Rosick.
No.
And trustee Warren.
Aye.
Motion fails for three.
Okay, I will entertain a, any motion either on this or on the long-range financial plan. Trustee Carpenter, do you have a motion?
Yes, Rebecca, would you mind going back to that previous slide, though?
Oh, sure, sorry. There you go.
I moved to approve the additional construction coordinator staff position and job description to the Department of Public Works for 2021 and discussion during the budgeting process.
Trustee Carpenter, can I ask for a clarification? Is it to include budgeting for this position within the scope of how the draft budget is presented?
Yes.
See that impact? Okay, there's one.
Yes.
Okay, so your motion is basically that we will decide, are you trying to say we'll decide during the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Decide what during the budget?
We'll decide, decide on creation of the position and funding of the position. We, like, we'll make a decision when we discuss the DPW budget during budget, but we will, the draft budget will include this position in there, basically.
Exactly.
Okay, is there, I'll second that. Okay, is there any discussion on that motion? That, let's keep it to things that we've not already, points that we haven't already made. Thank you. Okay, trustee Ursink.
When would that come up for a vote, then? When, when would that position come up for the next vote?
It would be during the budgeting process in October.
So.
So you would discuss, you would discuss it and review it within the scope of the budget. So as we provide you with a draft budget at the end of this week for our first budget meeting coming in next Tuesday, we would reflect this position within the scope of the budget. And then we would move through our budget meetings, and then the budget is approved at the second meeting in November. So at that time, the board then approves the document. And if it was included within the scope of that budget, then we would move forward.
Okay, are there any other questions or discussion on the motion by trustee Carpenter? Yes, trustee Ursink.
Is that, does that work for DPW? Does that work in the grand scheme of everything that you guys are proposing?
I don't know if Leanne was going to comment, but I would interject that that will work for us moving forward to continue.
I'll second that. Okay, thank you. Are there, is there any further discussion on this motion? Oh, okay. Do we, trustee Backhorst?
Yeah, the one comment I would make is to remember everyone that our budget discussions are numerous and long so that I would ask all of my fellow trustees in advance of that discussion that you really get your handle, your, get your mind around this because I thought it was pretty dang clear tonight, but apparently it's not. And that's not a personal comment towards anyone. But, so just, I hope we don't have another two hours of discussing this during budget when we're discussing about 35,000 other things. Thank you.
Well, actually, we have three meetings on budget, and they're usually pretty succinct. And, and they don't actually take that much time. Okay, I, can, Rebecca, can you read back the motion?
Trustee Carpenter moved to approve discussing the additional construction coordinator staff position and job description in the Department of Public Works in the 2021 budget for the staff position consistent, or position, period.
Okay, um, let's call the roll.
Trustee Amenta.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Carpenter.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Stokebran.
Yes.
President Rosick. President Rosick.
Yes.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, okay. Should we move on to our choice about option A or option B? And were any combination thereof or changes thereof? Does anyone have a motion?
I can make a motion to direct village staff to pursue option B with RFP.
So option B is replacement of the north in 2022, doing the overlay on the south and then doing, replacing the south in 2026, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on that motion?
Is it clear from our previous discussion, then, that we will take advantage of TID 5 incremental financing?
That I actually have as a separate motion following this one.
Okay, thank you.
Just for purposes of clarity. I heard trustee Warren move on that motion. Was there a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Oh, you did, thank you, trustee Ursink.
Can, can, I have a question about, so trustee Warren, your motion was to put it out to RFP. And at the, and that's putting out the engineering to RFP, obviously, okay. As opposed to using strand? Are those are the two options, correct, Leanne and Rebecca?
Correct.
And then using strand, we would not do the RFP, but it would save us some time?
Correct.
Okay.
Can we tie the two together with the TID? Like, I, I don't feel comfortable voting for one without the other.
Why don't you amend, move to amend the motion?
Okay, can you restate the motion?
Sure, trustee Warren moved to pursue, direct staff to pursue option B with an RFP.
And option B is full reconstruction, correct?
No, option B.
It's what I, it's what I just stated, that we're doing 2022, the north part, overlay on the south, and then 2026 will do the south.
But, just for clarification purposes, option B is pavement replacement with spot curb repair.
Right. And so, and they both could use TID money, it wouldn't run out in those two years?
Option B would utilize TID funding.
For the north, for the north portion, yes.
But not for the south part. Okay, and then, and the other one couldn't because it might close, is that correct?
Correct, right.
So I'd like to make, I'd like to amend the motion to, to conduct both the south and north full reconstruction using TID 5 funding.
Okay, on that, I, is there a second? Okay, I don't hear a second for that motion.
That option A, she just, was that option A she's recommending then for the TID? Full reconstruction?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you were saying full reconstruction, but both segments, using the TID for both segments is what?
Correct, it could be staged, but using the TID for both sections for full reconstruction.
Okay, is there a second for that? I'll second just because I have a question about it. Mark, are we, could we use TIF for the south and the north sections?
Because that hasn't been presented as an option.
No, that would not be my interpretation of the TID project plan. And in addition, the TID 5 would be closed by the time the implementation for that were to occur.
Wait.
Go ahead.
I hope you're right. Because it's two years in a row, okay?
Okay, all right, so can we vote on the amendment? Does everyone know, is everyone clear on the amendment? Okay, let's, let's go right to a vote on the amendment.
Can I make a comment before we go to vote?
Sure.
I'm under, I'm confused because I was under the impression from when I talked to Rebecca that the TID would be open for another two years. So if we did full reconstruction and then full reconstruction, why is that not possible?
Mark.
If I could just jump in, because the full reconstruction options are only available in 2026 and 2027 with the materials that have been presented tonight.
Rebecca, is that correct?
Yes, that is what is presented in the materials tonight.
Can I ask, is the south part within a half a mile, too? Because we originally prioritize the South Oakland over North Oakland.
It does not include all of South Oakland Avenue.
Okay, okay, so if we're using the TIF, it has to be the North Oakland part?
Within the half mile.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay, can you read the, can you read the roll for the amendment to the motion?
Yes, trustee Amenta.
No.
Trustee Backhorst.
No.
Trustee Carpenter.
No.
Trustee Ursink.
No.
Trustee Stokebran.
Nay.
President Rosick.
Of course.
Trustee Warren.
No.
Motion fails, or amendment fails, pardon me.
Okay, so we're on trustee Warren's original motion, which is to approve option B, pavement replacement with spot curb repair of North Oakland in 2022, paving of South Oakland in 2021, and then replacement of South Oakland in 2026, and that we go to RFP for engineering and design. Okay, I didn't exactly state the motion, or the gist of the motion. So is there any other discussion? Okay, let's proceed to roll call.
Trustee Amenta.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Carpenter.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Aye.
Trustee Stokebran.
Aye.
Trustee, or pardon me, president Rosick.
No.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, great. Let's see, is not approved.
So for this, for this possible motion, I would suggest that we move past it because we had an earlier motion that was going to continue discussion of the position within the scope of the budget.
I think that's a good, I think that's a good suggestion. Let's move on to next motion funded under a TID 5 project plan. So this is basically stating that we intend to use TIF money to pay for the North Oakland portion.
Correct.
Okay, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll move that North Oakland Avenue roadwork should be funded under the currently approved TID 5 project plan as roadway improvements outside the district boundaries that are needed to serve the district.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion of this motion? Okay, let's do a roll call.
Trustee Amenta.
Aye.
Could you repeat the question?
Yes, trustee Ursink moved that North Oakland Avenue roadwork should be funded under the currently approved TID 5 project plan as roadway improvements outside the district boundaries that are needed to serve the district.
And, and is that specific enough to say which part of Oakland?
This is a North Avenue, North Oakland Avenue roadwork.
South, north?
It says north, it says North Oakland Avenue roadwork.
And it's a, it's not full reconstruction, so it would just be an overlay, correct?
It would be pavement replacement with spot curb repair.
Can we add that in the motion if, if possible?
We, we, well, the previous, in a previous motion, staff was directed to proceed with that.
Okay. As long as it's clear.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion of the motion? Let's move on to a roll call vote.
Trustee Amenta.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Carpenter.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Stokebran.
Aye.
President Rosick.
Yeah.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, are there any other motions or are we good to go?
That, we are good on this item, and I'm going to turn it over to Bart for the second item of the night.
Could we, could we take five minutes? Just, anyone else have five minutes? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's just take a five-minute break and then president Rosick will. Resume, thank you, everybody. I'm back.
Hey Bart, do you, do you need me to? Oh no, can you, do you want to share your screen?
Yeah, I'm still on hold, so I can.
Okay, perfect.
Hi guys, I'm here, I am obviously on my phone, I'm in transit because I'm moving my store. I got blocked. But if someone wants to chair the meeting, that is fine, because I know that trustees get mad when I'm on my phone. So Kathy, if you would like to do that? If not, I'd be glad to do it.
Sure, I can do it.
Okay. Okay.
Are we back?
I don't think we're.
Is it trustee Carpenter? Is it trustee Stokbrand, trustee Ursink?
I'm, I'm here, I'm just on mute because I'm, I'm eating dinner.
Okay, we have trustee Warren.
Amenta's here too, I'm eating also.
Okay, perfect. So I think we are ready, Bart, if you are ready.
Sure, trustee Stokbrand, would you like me to?
Yes, please, and I would just like to begin by saying thank you Bart, and Rebecca, and Chief Nimmer, whoever has had a part in this huge project of parking. It's a great thing to come to this point in all the work that you've done, and we wouldn't be here without your efforts. Thank you for all the multiple memos and studies and all the direction you've provided with, provided us, thank you. Go ahead Bart.
Okay, I will share a brief presentation. As trustee Stokbrand alluded to, this is not by any means the first conversation that we've had regarding parking. And actually, the primary conversation that we had most recently was the July 6, 2020 COW meeting, in which some additional recommend, some additional information was requested, at which point then, we were prepared to come back at the August 3 board meeting for consideration, but we ran out of time, so that was deferred. It was deferred for consideration until September 8, but we thought this was a good opportunity to utilize perhaps a little more of the discussion time so that on September 8, we're a little more clear on where we're going. So I prepared a brief summary of where we're at tonight, and then we are hoping for at least some sort of motion or direction so that we know exactly what to prepare for on the September 8 board meeting for consideration. So here's just a brief outline history, I won't go through all of it, but it's numerous meetings that we've gone through. Once again, I'd just like to reiterate the point, the key goals of the analysis were to improve communication, improve accessibility, improve standardization, and improve enforcement. So we hope that the recommendations that we've offered do that, and so we feel moving forward, these are the four things that we're guided by. I won't go through this, but this is the night parking overview. Currently, it's allowed and special exceptions with temporaries, hardships, or special permits. We also do offer off-street lots. The on-street parking overnight permit would provide greater access and increase equity in the village, is our interpretation. It would be easier for staff to communicate and village residents to comprehend. It would provide a standard option with less administration, and it would increase the opportunity for compliance, ideally reducing the need for as many citations as are currently issued. So COVID-19, for better or worse, provided us a preview of the existing on-street parking demand. It's not ideal, or it's not perfect, I should say, in that everyone's lives were disrupted in some manner, so it's perhaps not the perfect mirror moving forward. But for what it's worth, we did not receive complaints during the period of excessive on-street parking when the restrictions were removed. So we think that does give some perspective for the discussion tonight. Once again, the fiscal impacts are not intended to be positive or neutral, but rather to balance the supply and demand, that's staff's perspective throughout the process. The recommendations within the analysis, just to reiterate, were to maintain the 20 temporary permissions at the currently free offering, maintain off-street overnight permits, so all the lots that we currently maintain, we would, we would keep those, including the public and private lots. But it did request that we introduce a resident night parking permit that would replace the current hardship and special permits that are only offered to qualifying residents. It did suggest that the on-street, yeah, that the permit be higher than the off-street permit. So if we were to introduce an on-street permit without reducing the off-street, it suggested $60. It did suggest limiting it to two per household, but as an administrative note on that, that would require proof of residency. And then the study also did say residency was their preference with two forms of proof of identification. Once again, staff was opposed to that for numerous reasons that I've outlined previously, and we'll probably get into again. If however, that would be the desire of the board to do that, we would at least request that only one be required to align more so with voting standards. So on July 6, these are the previous questions that were offered. There was general consensus to introduce the on-street overnight parking permit. However, there were various board members with residency requirement questions, household limitations, and price. There was also some discussion regarding unknown demand and capacity, particularly with respect to the business district, and then the nearby blocks that are more dense with duplexes, how we feel this permit would impact those blocks, as well as the surrounding blocks, in terms of overflow potential. And then there was consensus that if we were able to do this implementation on January 1, would be preferable and doable, and that we would then revisit the numbers in six months or as soon as needed. So if, for example, we did something, and then in February, we realized, you know, that we went too far and go far enough, we are open to coming back sooner, but we feel six months is a good overview process. This was a large part of the conversation, so just summarizing what's in your packet. We analyzed three fiscal impacts moving forward. Option one would be a $60 on-street, $50 off-street permit, that's what matches the analysis. Option two is a $50 on-street and a $40 off-street, so that would keep the current price of the special permits and hardships as they are at $50, but would reduce the off-street option to incentivize that. In so doing, that does reduce revenue to the parking utility, so there are some impacts with that that would need to be discussed. And then we also heard a discussion or desire for potentially an even lower price, at which point a $40 on-street permit and a $30 off-street permit was analyzed. Once again, that has some impacts on the parking utility, particularly that we would need to understand moving forward with the budget. So that's kind of why we're here tonight, so that we can guide the budget conversations coming up in September and October, understanding how this might generally impact what those numbers look like. What we're looking for tonight would be direction for staff as to how to proceed with each of these three required actions. If we were to introduce a permit, we would need to change the current village code. Section 516 deals with night parking. Staff has drafted an ordinance, ordinance 3013, there's also a redlined code version in your packet that would introduce that permit. The current version in there does not have household limitations or residency requirements. It would simply replace the special permits with on-street overnight permits, so it would be a more general permit allowed, you know, throughout the village. With that, then, we would look towards formally adopting a policy on how overnight permissions are granted. That includes the temporary permissions, which we, which we do currently. It's not an official policy, but I think we would like to make that official so that it's better understood and could be updated when needed. So it would deal with all overnight permissions, temporary, on-street, and off-street. And then lastly, we would need to prepare a resolution for a fee schedule amendment to charge for the permit, suggested, staff is suggesting a $50 on-street and $40 off-street option. So I went through that quickly, because I know that we've discussed this plenty of times, and I'm sure that you guys have your own questions, and so I'm here, it looks like Chief Nimmer's here as well. Mark Emanuelson obviously is here as well for financial questions, so I'll turn it back to trustee Stokbrand to proceed with any discussion.
Okay, thank you. Does, is there any other staff that would like to make a comment before we open it to trustees for questions? If not, any trustee have a question, I'm looking for hands, sorry.
I do, trustee Carpenter.
Trustee Carpenter?
I have a question in regards to the cadence of how we issue the permits. In, in speaking with residents and talking and thinking, have we thought, because I know that there's some concerns regarding residency requirements for staff, have we thought about switching to a six-month permit instead of a monthly permit? And could we offer residents some sort of price break? You know, maybe it's for, I'm making it up, but make it, you know, maybe it's a $10 a month deduction, but then that would, you know, staff would only have to look at that residency requirement twice a year instead of, in theory, 12 times a year. I don't know if that's something we've thought about.
It has been discussed in general conversation, and part of the response by customer service was that oftentimes people only want it for a month, and they don't want to get into the process of having to refund people if they don't use all six months, and you know, I only need it for four months, and so they definitely felt as though the month offering needed to be maintained. I know that we would like to at least offer a quarterly permit, you know, six-month or annual, I think, would also be ideal with us, but with that, then, the idea of refunding people that change midstream gets difficult. So from an administration standpoint, I think the desire was to maintain the monthly option to reduce the confusion of refunds, but. Yeah.
I mean, can it be that there, there are no refunds? I mean, if you buy a six-month permit and you only need five months, you know, but you know, you've maybe saved $10 a month, or you know, or whatever it may be. You know, it's sort of, it's sort of a wash, like if you buy, you know, a month more than you need, maybe you can give it to someone else, or I don't know, although I guess that sort of defeats the residency requirement. But you know, I just think, I was just thinking that that could be a way to sort of eliminate the frequency and incentivize people, you know, I mean, if you know that you've just signed a one-year lease, that you could have a parking permit for a year and not have to come back in and only have to provide residency, I think, I would think that that'd be a win for everybody, for the residents, for staff. You know, I don't know, I mean, I, I think that that is something that we should really think about.
I'll quickly clarify one point, and then I see that Mark has his hand raised, so he wants to weigh in here too. The intention of the current proposal would be only require residency once a year, so you would show it to us, and that would be in our system, and that would be proof for one year that aligns with standard lease practices, so it wouldn't be that you would need to give it to us every time. Of course, the software needs to confirm this, but the proposal within the policy is that you would only have to prove that once a year, or once every 12 months. After the 12 months, you have to re, you know, prove that you're in the same lease or utility bill or whatnot, but I'll let Mark raise his, I'll let Mark respond as well.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, yeah, just one more comment that I know I've heard customer service express regarding longer-term permits, and that is, it becomes an affordability issue for certain people to come up with six months' worth of permit fees at, at a time. So again, they, their preference is just to keep, it is automated, so keep it as consistent as possible, and then also not to make it a financial strain perhaps for somebody to come up with a six-month worth of a permit fee. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Backhorse, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, a couple of questions, and one that I think is really fundamental, and no one seems to be really be able to answer this, is why do we have the overnight parking restrictions in the first place? What benefit does that bring to our village? And then also, I know you had mentioned this in the past, and forgive me, just wondering if you could reiterate what Milwaukee's overnight parking duration and cost is again in Whitefish Bay, since those are two adjacent municipalities.
Yep, so Milwaukee offers an annual permit for $55, or every four months, they have a lesser amount, but it's $55 for the annual permit.
The whole year?
Correct, the whole year. Whitefish Bay does not allow it as a, as a general permit option, but if you do qualify for it, it's $30 per month.
Okay, thank you, and then the first question is, why does this exist in the first place? Because I've lived in many municipalities, Seattle and Madison, in two in particular, where you did not, and there was alternate side parking in order to deal with A congestion and B with street sweeping and shoveling and other needs. So I'm just, again, wondering what the rationale of this, of this parking restriction is. And if it's to fill budgetary gaps, then that's a different discussion, go ahead.
I don't have an exact answer as to why Shorewood implemented this and/or when Shorewood implemented it. I did include within the budget, or within the packet materials, a parking policy perspective in terms of, this is not a public good, the street parking is not a public good as the, as the offering, so whether or not we want to, you know, reduce it to zero, that's a policy decision that, you know, the board could make, but I don't have an exact answer as to why and when Shorewood implemented the restriction. I don't believe Chief Nimmer does as well, I know he's on the phone call, but I don't know that he has that history either.
Right, and did the $100,000 parking study that we did give us a reason why this is something that, I mean, I hear what you're saying, that we might not know why. Let me start over, and I would ask my other board members to think about this as well. If any of us understands why we have this currently, that's, that's one thing, but it seems like I'm not getting, or nor I've ever had this question really answered. Now, it could have changed from why it initiated, whenever it initiated, but also like right now. I just am wondering what the justification of having overnight parking restrictions is, and what it means for a municipality. Because I do also want to reiterate that we do have, what is it, 54% renter, and a lot of the rental units do not have more, have parking or more than one spot. I mean, I guess there's a variety that there, so so going to that equity point that you had mentioned earlier, I'm just wondering how this fits in the modern demographic, because Shorewood used to be a very conservative municipality, and then it's changed, and we're about 70% progressive now. So it's just, you know, having a more conservative lens on a current progressive society is interesting to me. So it's just, you know, having a more conservative lens on a current progressive society is interesting to me.
Okay, I guess unless anyone wants to answer Trustee Bachhorst's question directly, I'll go to Trustee Ursink, and then someone can address Trustee Bachhorst's question after Trustee Ursink speaks.
Thank you. I guess I'm going to piggyback a little bit on Trustee Bachhorst. And I would love to know the financial implications to doing away with these parking restrictions. You know, what happens if we, if we don't have any restrictions on overnight parking? What happens to the budget? And then are there alternative sources for revenue? Like, let's say, parking meters in the business district? Are there things we can do to offset the lost revenue? And then, you know, with that, with the costs, you know, that I see, you know, I see we lose revenue if we go to a 40-30 model. What is that? Is that for the parking checker? Is that, you know, what are those costs that we're actually, you know, losing there? Or what is the revenue we're losing?
I would defer to Mark on all those questions.
And I know Mark did put three different scenarios in the packet. I don't know if Trustee Bachhorst and Trustee Ursink, if you're...
Yeah, I've looked at, I'm not, I've looked at the packet. I'm reading the packet, but I'm asking a question that's not in the packet. And that is, what if we ease, what if we go without parking restrictions?
Well, clearly, the revenue...
Well, I'd be happy to just refer to those last three pages in the packet. Again, these were the comprehensive metrics the board had asked to see related to parking activities. And I can answer the most direct question. If we just said, never mind, park it will, that's a $500,000 impact to the budget. Now, again, why we ended up where we are over the last 30, 40 years is really not the question. The question is, what are we going to do moving forward? So options to recover some of those costs. If you wanted to look at vehicle-related items, have been presented to the board previously, and I'll summarize those again. And part of that could potentially be parking meters, which would take probably a couple of years to implement. One of the other options would be a wheel tax. Again, you know, that is, you know, strictly a dollars issue, not a policy discussion. But whatever the board decides to do, we will present it and work through the budget together to find some common ground and priorities within the village. Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Ursink, your hand is still up. Did you have another question?
No, I can lower my hand. But while you called on me, do we have any idea of what revenue we could, we could gain with parking meters in the business district? Do we have projections on those figures?
I believe the last time, and I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, but the last time we brought that to the board, preliminary estimates were somewhere between $250,000 and $350,000 per year, depending on the extent to which the board felt meters could be in place and the rates to which they would be enforced in the timeframes. Thank you.
I did have one question too. I noticed we fell into the 60, 50, 50, 40, 40, 30, the $10 increments for the cost. I'm just wondering, because I, in a recession, I hesitate to see budgeting for a number that starts with parentheses around it. So I just, I throw out here to Mark or Bart, if we went to 55 on-street and 45 off-street, the scenario, the net impact at the bottom of page seven, I'm just trying to get to a balance of zero. Obviously, we come a little closer. I don't need to make any more money that, you know, have more money coming in than we are currently. But giving the situation with the recession right now, I just, I'd like to see that closer to zero than $30,000 in the hole. And I'm wondering about a 55 on-street, 45 off-street price.
Well, I'd be happy to comment on that if you'd like. Sorry, Trustee Menta, would you like to proceed instead?
No, that was me, go ahead, Mark.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, the challenge that we have here is these are anecdotal scenarios based on what we think is a reasonable expectation, given what we think we know about the market conditions. I can tell you that the 50, 40 scenario, the prospective losses are in the parking utility. But the parking utility has cash reserves to deal with short-term operational losses for a couple of years. And we can revisit where we're at in six months, a year, two years. And if we find that to be problematic, we could, we can adjust it then. As far as the general fund goes, the 50, 40 scenario is pretty close to a wash, maybe a modest, you know, $5,000 to the good in from hypothetical budgeting perspective. And that's what we would budget for. And then we just reevaluate it next year, once we see what, you know, has actually transpired in the, you know, the last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Warren?
Thank you. Thanks to everyone for all the hard work on this. I have a couple of questions somewhat unrelated. My first question is unrelated to the, to kind of the budgeting of this. I'm wondering, I think when we had this study done, they anticipated a lot of things going in at once. And I noticed that we're doing overnight parking, but we're not doing, you know, right now, the proposal is not focused on alternate side of the street parking. So I'm curious as to whether DPW has a position on whether, if we just roll overnight parking and don't make people from side to side, whether they'll be able to clear the streets. We're going into winter right now, so I have a concern there.
Are you unavailable?
I would say that we share that concern.
Do you have any sense of whether, how large a concern that should be for us? In terms of proceeding without that, without the alternate side?
I don't, I don't know how to quantify that at this point.
Okay. Okay, and I had one more question too. Gosh, it's totally, I'm sorry, I actually lost my train of thought right in the middle of it. So maybe, if you could come, if you could come back to me, I actually did it. Oh, no, I got it, I'm sorry. The survey that we did, we seemed to ask questions as to what people would pay based on certain, certain price points, what percentage of people would say they'd buy the permit. I'm wondering if we did also did research on what the market was in Shorewood. You know, it seems like we picked these 50, 40, 40, 30. What are people actually paying for non-village lots in Shorewood?
Bart, do you have any insight?
Yeah, I unfortunately, I do not have that. The parking study also did not include that. I didn't have a chance to, you know, survey individual. I can tell you, I did hear from one developer who said that what we're offering would be cheaper than what they're charging and that their tenants would likely switch to on-street. So I just, I know of one developer who told me that what we were proposing to charge was cheaper than theirs, but I can't tell you if that's standard or what that relates to. It was a newer development that offered, you know, underground parking, so keep that in mind. The older stuff, the older stock doesn't have a lot of off-street availability. So the answer to your question could be all across the board. The newer stuff is likely more expensive. The older stuff is either nonexistent or potentially inflated based on the fact that there is no on-street permit existing. So if we were to introduce the on-street permit, that likely would also change. So... Can I, sorry, one more question, and this again for Bart. We'd also talked about pushing, in the business district, pushing it back to, two hours, parking back two hours. Sounds redundant, but it's not, two-hour parking back two hours. I'm wondering if that would be rolled up concurrent with, with these changes? Or if that's something that we would do down the line? In other words, would we have that from the beginning here? Or is that something that we would have to, you know, six months or a year, figure out a way to prioritize that as a secondary initiative? Yeah, I think if that was a concern at this time, we could consider it. I will say, just since the last meeting, I realized through research just randomly, that was changed relatively recently. Perhaps some other staff members that were around might remember it. It used to be for a longer duration, and it was actually pushed back, if that's the right direction to discuss it, so that people could park on Oakland as opposed to into the residential neighborhoods. So at one point, there was a discussion of opening Oakland and Capitol up more so for overnight parking. Now, we're kind of on the opposite side of that question. So to your point, if that was a concern now, I definitely would, you know, welcome that discussion. But I also, to your other point, I feel like that's something that we could take up as we find it to be in the field, per se, because less than 10 years ago, the perspective was complete opposite, so. Thank you, that's all I got for now.
Mr. Emanuelson, did you have another comment?
Yes, thank you so much. I just wanted to check with Director Grape and Todd. Does the village currently have alternate side parking restriction ordinances?
Yeah, and we've discussed that before as well. So on the books, in the ordinance, we do have alternate side parking within 516. My understanding is that we stopped enforcing that strictly based on, it really wasn't a problem and there was some confusion with residents. So I believe it's only currently enforced on Capitol and Oakland. Chief Nimmer could confirm that for us. But within the ordinance, it does indicate that alternate side parking is village-wide currently. Unless your street doesn't have it on both sides, then you're only allowed on the one side that it's allowed. So yeah, part of the conversation could be to whether to, you know, to more strictly enforce that currently on the books. The discussion a few meetings ago was to take on-street overnight parking first and then utilize the response to that to craft more detailed responses to those other issues, including winter parking. We didn't feel like we could do those before this winter. And so the concept would be to not roll that out until the next year's winter, so we would maintain the current standards.
Okay, I see some people, do we have any? Rebecca, are there people who have indicated they'd like to speak on parking?
Can I make a, can I make a comment?
David, Trustee Menta?
Yeah, I, okay, I think if we're going to allow people to park on the street, we definitely need to implement alternate side of the street parking at the same time. Because, you know, people, because that, that's the only way we're going to, the DPW is going to be able to do street maintenance and do snow removal, because we're going to have more cars parked out there all the time. Second, my second point, so I think we have to do them concurrent. My second point is, well, it's already on the books, but I mean, we have to start enforcing it and make that part of the rollout and the information about it. My second point is, I don't understand why residency and the per-household limit are connected. I mean, I personally am not that concerned about non-residents wanting to park here. I mean, people want to park in the middle of the night near your home. So, you know, I don't, I don't see too many residents who I think are, are non-residents, who I think are going to be interested in buying a parking permit here. On the other hand, when you look at some of the blocks that I requested that the planning department look at, I mean, we do have certain areas of town that are extremely dense, have apartment buildings, have duplexes. If we do not, and the consultant also said that we need to limit to two per household, not per, not each license plate, but two per household. I fear if we do not do that, we will have streets that are completely parked up. And that is going to be a problem for many people. I mean, I know the people who are parking there will be happy. But we may even have people who say, you know, I have a garage and I have a driveway, but instead of, you know, parking my cars one behind the other, I'd rather just have, park this one on the street. I mean, we really don't know exactly how many people, situations where we may have someone buying this permit. And I just, I can guarantee you that if you have a street that is almost entirely parked up, you are going to have some very unhappy residents. So if we do, and I personally am in favor of really lowering the cost to 40, 30. I think there's a lot of reasons for doing that, including equity reasons. But if we do not have a control on the number of permits that we allow per household, I think we're going to find ourselves in trouble very quickly. And we, and we will be very, I mean, those of us who are on the board, when we changed the fee, we took away the free 20-night parking and made it a $2 charge, which we all thought would be, you know, I mean, $2 is not that big of a deal. It was a very big deal. We heard from a lot of people, and people were very, very upset. So I just, I just want to warn people that, you know, I know we haven't had a tremendous amount of public comment, and we don't have a lot of people on this meeting. But parking is something that people get really bent out of shape about. And I do, I really feel strongly, I just, I can't vote for it if it doesn't have the per-household limit. So I'll finish my comments, thank you.
So just a quick response to that, without requiring residency for household limits, the easy workaround is you just say that you live somewhere else, right? So if your unit already has two, you know, there, I just say I live down the block somewhere. We would never have to verify that to prove that I actually do live anywhere. So I don't see a way that you can accurately enforce household limitations without having to prove where everyone resides. Because once again, if I live in a duplex unit and my two roommates or whoever already has cars, I just pick a address down the street, we're not going to check it anyways. There we have three in that unit, so at that point, the whole concept of household limitation.
Okay, I agree, that's a good point. But I mean, the village already, for the 50% of people who own, okay, we know they live there because we, we are their utility connection, right? So we know that. We're already checking people's residency for voting. Now, I don't know if we can use voting for that. I mean, the school district is checking residency by asking people this year to upload their documents. You know, I really, I mean, I understand it's a staffing issue, and I, but at the same time, we're really reducing, I mean, I don't think we need all these commercial lots anymore. And we're changing a whole bunch of things that are reducing workload related to parking. And I, you know, I, I just feel like we're going to, I, I am not willing to risk it by just like opening the floodgates and seeing what's happened. And probably in, you know, 80% of the village, it won't matter. But there's going to be some blocks that it's going to really matter, and it's going to really change people's lives, and it's going to be a very big issue. And I, you know, if we want to do this, then we have to do it the right way. I think to do it in a slipshod way is going to really hurt everybody on this board. I'm done, thank you.
Okay, Trustee Warren, I see your hand up.
Oh, thanks. And I was just going to say, I appreciate your thoughts, Bart, that that's a good point. But I would also kind of, my counterpoint would be that if we do, if we were to institute a household limit, you know, there is some power in that, and there is some power in the rule. And I have to think, and maybe this is naive, that you wouldn't have no rampant fraud in the application of these licenses. So I do think that, yes, are some people going to circumvent the rules? Sure, but if we make the limit, I would think that would by and large be followed. I think there's some power in you saying, you shouldn't do this, and this is our rule. You know, people generally want to follow the rules of will, so. I mean, just my thoughts. I appreciate your thoughts about the exception kind of swallowing the rule, but I might be comfortable with a kind of a more, you know, instituting a rule kind of, and not knowing that we can't necessarily check, you know, voting rules or utilities. But having the rule there is kind of a backstop, so if we find it out, we can pull the permit.
Rebecca, are there people that indicated they'd like to speak to parking?
Yes, I believe that we have two. We have Jeff Jarra and Caroline Creelau. So, Trustee Stokebrand, I'll leave it to you to call upon them.
Okay, Mr. Jarra, you have a couple of minutes to share your thoughts, please.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the trustees for allowing me to speak tonight. I want to thank especially Mr. Grape and Todd and Mr. Emanuel for their assistance in providing me some data and historical context on the information I'm going to give you tonight. So just for general outline purposes, in 2019, I want to just kind of go over the financials very briefly. Residents paid per person between $460 and $720 in annual fees to park on the streets and in the lots in Shorewood. the streets and in the lots in Shorewood. And the village collected like $113,000 from about $2,400 on-street permits and about $187,000 from $3,300 off-street permits. And the total revenue collected from all of the permits together, which is about 5,700 or so, was $300,000 dollars and change. And this came from about 1,000 individuals based on the data that I was given. And this got me to really thinking about what is the impact that this current policy is having on the residents who are impacted by it most directly? And upon doing some research and digging and talking to not only my neighbors and my friends who live in Shorewood, but also a number of the trustees here. You know, I kind of broke this down into about six assumptions that I see people embracing or understanding related to overnight on-street parking in Shorewood. The first assumption is that Shorewood has to charge fees for parking because Milwaukee does. And if, you know, Shorewood doesn't, then Milwaukee Eastside residents with no access to off-street parking are somehow going to park in Shorewood for free and then walk to their residences. Well, the reality of that is, is that this might be true for some sections, probably down near the border. But the fact of the matter is, is that it's not going to happen everywhere in the village. So trustee Bachhurst, to your point, I don't know why we have a village overnight parking policy either, why this program exists and the ordinance that exists. We don't need them everywhere. So selective regulation and enforcement would probably be a much better way to do it. The second assumption that I've seen kind of floating around is that there is some sort of density or supply and demand, and that plays a role. The reality is, is that for the consulting firms report, I mean, for the most part, there's no supply and demand issue, you know, anywhere in the village for on-street overnight parking. Currently, the village is at, I think it was 25% of total capacity. And the funny thing is, is that if you released all the cars that are currently parked in the village and in private lots that are currently part of this program, I think you'd add about, you know, a little over 300 cars to to the streets at night. And that would be easily absorbed in the surrounding neighborhoods adjacent to the current lots. And trustee Amenta, you know, you raised the concern of streets being parked up. To that, I ask you and the rest of the trustees and maybe even Chief Nimmer, we just had a real-life test of unregulated parking. And during the spring lockdown, I saw no parked-up streets and I was looking for it. I used that time period of the lockdown and the raised restrictions to survey what parking would be like if it was just free and open in Shorewood. And I didn't really see any issues at all. And if there are issues, if we do just sort of do away with this, then you just regulate the hotspots. You don't have a blanket policy. The third assumption that I saw was that residents want access to parking on their block for convenience, the sort of territorial mindset. And that unregulated street parking would somehow prevent them from being able to do that. Well, the reality is, is that most people who can park off-street will continue to do that. And those who need to park on their block will more likely than not find a place on their block, probably near their front door. But if they don't, they'll find it nearby. And that changes daily. So they may not find it on Monday night, but they'd find it on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The fourth assumption that I ran into is that overnight parking program serves to possibly deter crime. And this has been one of my favorite myths that I've found to be highly entertaining for myself and for others. You know, the fact is, is that an irrational fear of a criminal element here doesn't make it true. This is a fallacy that's been a mainstay in village politics for a long time. I've actually been, you know, following this issue since 2006 or so. Increased street parking does not in and of itself logically lead to an increase in crime. There's no historical data to support this claim in the village. And I was discussing this briefly through email with Mr. Grape and Trog. And he said that during the recent spring lockdown, there really wasn't any appreciable increase in any sort of, you know, issues related to that. I think there were some issues briefly related to garbage collection, but that was about it. So that's not really an issue either. The fifth assumption is that residents want parking regulated because of aesthetic considerations. And this is really an interesting sort of excuse. The simple fact of the matter is, is that aesthetic value is subjective. That's not objective. It's not data-driven. The program structure, you know, as it currently is and is proposed, you actually undermine your own argument if this is what you're basing your policy on. Because on-street parking is actually currently allowed in the village for one-third of the calendar year. There's 110-plus nights that that are Friday and Saturday nights during the year. And there's also the holiday period between Christmas and New Year's. And then in 2019, there were actually 41,000 temporary permits for on-street parking that were issued. So your own exceptions to your policy undermine the entire argument about aesthetic considerations. I mean, it's not really an issue. And the final assumption is probably the biggest one. And that is that the parking program provides revenue to help run the village government. The reality is that what I've learned actually just today is that the revenue earned from the off-street parking program essentially pays for the costs of that program, the administrative costs. So there's no real net gain of revenue on an annual basis. And the on-street permit revenues in 2019 were only $113,000 and change. So, you know, all of that was used to pay back into various budgetary expenses that were either related to the on-street parking program administration or for other government expenses. $113,000 really isn't a whole lot to, you know, to sort of think about from that perspective. But there are other budgetary factors as well. I mean, very briefly, this entire parking ordinance, you know, creates a government apparatus. It's a big structure that, you know, costs, there are associated costs to it. There's administrative costs, maintenance costs, insurance, and all kinds of expenses because of this parking program that wouldn't exist if the parking program didn't exist. And on top of that, you know, the other sort of elephant in the room here is the inefficient use of current village resources. You know, one of the major flaws of this parking program is that the village owns lots, private pieces of land that they purchased and that they've turned into municipal lots. The revenue that these lots generate from permit fees is exponentially lower that would be collected in property taxes. For example, if the village sold the lots and they were developed into residential, commercial, or mixed-use properties. In addition, you know, the administrative costs per lot actually detract from the overall revenue the lots bring in. So really, the village is sort of wasting these resources. And my final point is that there's a socioeconomic impact with this as well, but I really want all the trustees to think about very, very seriously. The vast majority of parking program participants are renters who most often learn less than their homeowner counterparts. And they are far more likely to be from socio-economically and racially diverse backgrounds. So from that perspective, the proposed and the current parking program really is detrimental to this segment of Shorewood's residents. You know, I mean, the bottom line is, the village essentially perpetuates a parking permit program that charges residents' fees to maintain the existence of the program, all while addressing problems that don't actually exist if you really look under the hood. There's no demonstrated need for the overnight parking program as presently proposed. And it's an unnecessarily burdensome regulatory policy that costs individuals hundreds of dollars per year at a substantial inconvenience.
Thank you.
I would actually like to see you delay your vote scheduled for September 8th, because quite frankly, I think that you really need to break this down and think about it from a very fundamental perspective. There is no purpose to this ordinance and this program, and there's no reason whatsoever any resident should be paying for overnight parking. Thank you very much.
So next, we had Ms. Creitlow. Is that correct? And I see Mike Mahrez's hand up?
Yes.
Ms. Creit, I'm sorry, am I pronouncing your name correctly? Did you ask to speak? I don't see your hand up. Caroline Creitlow? Was that the name, Rebecca?
Yeah, she's, I just don't know if we can hear her yet.
She's showing up as unmuted.
It looks like she's trying to speak, but I'm not.
Yeah.
I heard her say something, say hi there, but it's very, just very faint.
I wonder if the her audio isn't turned up all the way.
Okay, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, you can, you have a few minutes, please. Go ahead. We can hear you. I thought we could.
Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. I made some technical difficulties. Okay, thanks. Yep, I've been working with Jeff on some of this stuff. He's been working on it for far longer than I have. I'm a village resident of 14 years. So my situation is just a little bit different. I'm owner-occupied in a duplex. I'm sort of over here on duplex row on Maryland Avenue and I'm really kind of landlocked. I have a three-car garage for a duplex that's three and three units. So right now, our garage spaces are all used up between the tenants and myself. And our lives are sort of growing with children aging into cars and partners coming in and tenants and whatnot. So we probably easily, I mean, I'm guessing somewhere probably easily around $1,000 a year is what we are paying in addition to our almost $10,000 a year in property taxes and parking.
How many people and how many cars for, you have a duplex, which is two units, right?
Yep. So we have a three, both of our units are three-bedroom units. So we have currently four cars that are, that we're trying to make a go of in this household. So the biggest problem being my partner's oversized work vehicle. The oversized work vehicle does not fit into the garage and we are landlocked. We only have a three-car garage, no driveway, no slab, nothing. So we're on an alley with a three-car garage. There is an area next to my garage, we could potentially put a slab and be willing to, but there's a power pole blocking that. So we're literally just locked up. There's just no ability for us to even if we wanted to expand our parking situation. So again, as it pertains to my partner who leaves at 6:00 in the morning, gets back easily at 8:00 at night, leaves when it starts, comes back when it starts. I'm just not super comfortable with the whole idea of walking two blocks or a block and a half to the remote parking. It's just not a real viable option for us, in my opinion. So we're just sucking up these parking citations. I've heard the concerns and it's, you know, streets being too busy with parking. I think we had, as Jeff said, we had a good run of that during virus times. I mean, the street cleaning, also, I'd like to remind people that we do have, we have cars on our streets every single night. Every single night, people are calling in their vehicles to park and there's no thing where it has to be on one side of the street or we have to move our cars by a certain time. I mean, it's just, it is what it is right now and the streets get cleaned every winter. I mean, I've been here for 14 years. Lastly, I know the revenue, I mean, I don't know if I heard out of somewhere, maybe a half, $500,000 would be missing perhaps if we eliminated. Now, I don't know if that's coming in permits or if that's coming in actual parking citations, but it seems easily, it seems like that's an easy remedy with parking permit stuff. I don't know. Like I said, I've talked to a lot of, a lot of.
Permits or not?
Well, Arthur had mentioned something about the possibility of doing parking meters in the business district. I'm also a business owner here in Shorewood. Me, myself, I'll be honest with you. I would prefer to buy a parking permit each month, myself, rather than burden my clients at my business. That's, that's my personal thought on it. I understand that, you know, if my partner bought a smaller vehicle, if, if, if we could expand our, there's a lot of ifs, we, if we could do other things, we would. I don't know about, I think it, it's a different conversation doing meters for business district, just because, again, I am a business owner and I wouldn't necessarily want that. But I am open to buying a permit. Yes, I am open to that. Absolutely. But I am able to do that.
Okay, good to know. Did you have anything further to add?
No, I just would like to say that if you guys were wanting to push this out, you guys take a lot of time to figure things out and you do your diligence on this board. I will give you all that. You are quite thorough, all of you. I will give you that. Very, very thorough. But in the meantime, maybe you could lift the restrictions like we did during virus times so that we can get all the ins and outs sort of ironed out, because Lord knows how long that's going to take. But might you consider lifting them in the meantime? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Maher?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to comment. Milwaukee was actually the first city in the nation that had night parking. And, and I think as a resident who lives on the south end of the village, all you need to do is look and drive through the east side of Milwaukee to see what fairly unrestricted night parking looks like when snow is piled up. You go over in Cambridge Woods, the streets are full. You can't find a spot. Then I was on a neighborhood associations group. They had, the residents were having a hard time parking on the street. In 2005 to 2008, the village did an analysis block by block of how many night permissions. And I don't know if, if the, has been thought through, like the village center, all those apartments across on Murray. If those people want night parking, which if you have unlimited night parking and it's not that expensive, where are those people going to park? They're going to spread out into the neighborhoods. They looked at the highest usage was the 3,500 block of Oakland, which is down near Harrah's. You have all those big apartments. Those people at this point are renting, they either have made arrangements or they've rented and used the bus. If all those folks or a lot of them shift to night parking, the neighborhoods around Oakland along there, they will fill up and you won't, the residents, as trustee Amenta said, are going to be frustrated because they can't even park near their houses. The 3,900 block of Maryland, there's those big apartments there. On Farwell, there's a lot of apartments, fairly high buildings. Where are those, if you start giving out unlimited night parking permits, where are those people going to park? They're going to park in the neighborhoods. I do believe you do have to have a number of permits per resident. As the other speaker mentioned, they might have five or six permits per unit. Where are all those people going to park? How are we going to clean? I don't think you can proceed without a plan on how you're going to remove snow. Winter's coming pretty soon and the thought of, well, we'll adjust it in the future. Once you open the barn door, there's not going to be any going back. And I've heard about, well, the pandemic, during the pandemic, it was going to seem an issue. Well, you don't have the University of 25,000 students operating over the, since March or March. So we have a very different situation here. I would also hate to see the south end of the village, house prices are actually doing really well. And over the last 10 years, there's been a lot of code compliance. Many of the houses now are filling with families versus filling with students. And I'd hate to see us reverse that. And part of the night parking is, the village has not done a lot of work on overcrowding. We have an apartment across the street, a duplex. We've counted five people in a two-bedroom. I mean, there's just a lot of people. Students will fill these units and parking is one way to control how overcrowded our neighborhoods are. The other thing I looked at, and I know trustee Amenta mentioned it. I happened to look up what a typical storage unit is. It's about $110 a month to rent this storage unit. And if I lived on an alley, I, and I had stuff I had to store, and I see some of these folks with their garages, they're full of stuff. You know, the permit is so cheap, they will just, it's a lot easier to park in front of your house than to go up an alley and pull in the garage. And if you need, so the price of the permit has to be high enough to incentivize people who do have alley parking or on their own parking to use that parking. So I would encourage the board to, to plan, to figure out these nuances before you jump off and just open the floodgates. But I would support a residence, the number of permits per resident and keep the fee high enough if you do go with open night parking that it encourages people to use other off-street parking and not to shift from their alley parking. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trust, Mr. Maher. Any other trustees? Would you like any other questions? Any other trustees? Would you like any other questions or do we have a motion? Or I guess at this point, I'm really concerned about the alternate side. Can you, is there a reason why we're not dealing with, was it just for simplicity? We were just going to start with the overnight, go with it for six months and then move into possibly alternate, but with the, with winter coming, I'm curious about the staff not addressing alternate side right now.
I can just chime, I can just chime in on the alternate side parking quick.
Go ahead, Chief Nimmer.
Sure, thank you. The, the, the main issue for the alternate side parking, if you do look up the ordinance, it's 500-16 and subsection C. And so how it reads, it's, it's, it's really confusing. And when, when asked, even my current staff about what it meant, they weren't sure. And it says, "On the east and north sides of the street, on Sunday, Tuesday, and Thursday nights." You have to be on one side. And then on the west side and south sides of the street, on Mondays and Wednesdays nights. So the issue becomes, what is the night? Is it app, because the parking restriction goes from 3:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. in the morning. So the confusion always came in is that somebody would say, oh, I thought it was supposed to be the night before or is it the night after? So it became, we would constantly, on a daily basis, and this predates me a little bit, but they would get constant calls about, I don't know what that meant. And so they would take it to court or they would, you know, want to have it dismissed. And certainly it was very confusing and our staff had a hard time telling people what it actually meant. So that being said, totally support the alternate side parking. All we just need to do is reword that so everybody is clear on what it means. And I would argue with something that's on, you know, on odd mornings from 3:00 to 5:00, you park on the odds, on odds side. And on even mornings, you would park on the even street, something like that. But super simple, one, one day or the other. So that's my input on the alternate side.
Thank you for that. Any, Bard or Rebecca, does anyone else have a staff input on that?
I can just quickly add, so the recommend, the analysis did recommend cleaning up the language and there's actually charts in the, in the analysis that, you know, we could use to, you know, reference it on a website or hand out to people. So I would just confirm that language is what the chief and his enforcement staff would like to use. And if that really is a key component of this, I could definitely add that clarity to the 516 proposed ordinance change. It would not be that difficult to add that clarifying language. So once again, in seeking direction tonight, that's the kind of thing that we're looking for in terms of what would be acceptable to vote on, on September 8th. So that's something that we could clearly add prior to next Tuesday.
And this is Rebecca. I would welcome an opportunity to get that clarification done with the ordinance so we could implement alternate side parking. Thank you.
Do we want to go around the table then and see? It seems to me then the issues we have are the overnight parking, the alternate side, and the limitations per residence. You know, limiting the number of permits per residence. And the staff has, prefers not to, I think because of the, the commitment for time. And I, you know, the goal here is, one of the biggest things was to make this simple. And obviously proving residency adds one layer, right? So would you like to tell us your thoughts on those three issues?
I'm sorry, who did you ask?
Trustee Bachhorst, please. Okay, trustee Aminta, do you want to go now?
Sure. I, I support changing the ordinance to allow overnight parking, but only if we are tracking and limiting them per household or unit, residence, whatever. What was, what were the other?
The alternate side, changing the language to parking on odd sides on.
Yeah, I, I think if we're gonna do it, we definitely need to have the alternate side of the street. And for, in terms of the fee, you know, I'm, I'm inclined to go lower rather than higher because I do think, as people discussed, there's, you know, we're talking about, the, the lower income, not necessarily, but renters in general, as we saw from our housing study, have an, on average, a lower income than our homeowners. And so hopefully that would become, is something that would make things more affordable, assuming that landlords don't increase rents to make up for it. But, you know, assuming that doesn't happen, I think it is important, important in terms of just being more inclusive, being more welcoming to people with different income levels. And so I do feel that the 40, 30 cost would be appropriate. But again, I cannot vote for this unless we're controlling the number per living space. Kind of, because I do think that, and I, I'm not sure that COVID, I agree that during COVID, at least in my neighborhood, we didn't get any complaints and things were fine. But I, I'm not sure that COVID is exact, is an exact analogy. And I also think that as this becomes available, you know, things are gonna happen that we may not have anticipated such as Mr. Maher brought up, people who just would prefer to use their garage for storage and park on the street. People who prefer to park on the street than use their garage on the alley. People who have kids who get a car, like, oh, I mean, I'll get a third car for my kid and we'll just park it on the street, no big deal. That's not happening now. And, and in addition, you know, we, we do have goals around alternative transportation use. And, you know, this seems like a step of favoring automobile over people who, for example, now might be riding the bus or biking or using alternative transportation methods. So that's my, that's where I am on it.
Trustee Sobren?
Trustee Bachhorst.
Oh.
Are you ready?
Oh, yep. Sorry, I was having technical issues before. So I just want everyone to.
The categories we're reviewing?
Are those categories set by the staff or you? I'm just curious.
I'm doing, trying to organize our thoughts.
Okay, yeah. So I, so in order, in that, to that point, just want us all to remember what our goal is here again and what are many of our limitations. So I am all for opening up on-street parking for a variety of residents. And if we were to do a tiered approach, I would say we go to those who need it most, meaning we allow those that rent and have limitations and apply for hardship parking. And we're forcing it oftentimes to park multiple blocks away in order to get to their home. The, the way, in my opinion, and what I've heard from many, many residents is that currently our village perpetuates a program that exacerbates inequality and prohibits, it's restricted to allowing people the entry into our village. We talk so much at this board and we hear so much from our, our residents the need for equity and the need to have affordable housing and affordable options. But yet, parking in a village lot or another private lot can cost upwards of $1,000 a year. And when you make $25,000, for example, $40,000, whatever, that is a pretty significant amount of money to spend on a service that the rest of the residents, yes, get for free or otherwise. So again, if we were to do a phased approach, I would, I would say let's, let's look at those that have the need and if there's an application process for that, fine. And then those of us that have driveways, like I can fit four or five cars in my driveway, I don't need to park on the street. But perhaps to, to ease staff appeal, we do allow everyone to have X amount of, we get passes. A lot of municipalities do this where you just put a pass in the window and you get a certain amount. Okay. I mean, there are a lot of ways around this. We're a smart village. But the socioeconomic concerns and the fact that we do have a very limited supply of parking available for, and what I mean by private parking, I'm not getting about street parking, is, is something that we definitely need to look at. And we did do this parking study, we have all heard, we do have the space for it. We can pivot if there are problems or if people take advantage of it. We're a smart village. We've done this before. We've changed rules in the past and we can certainly continue to do that. So, and again, but the other thing that we talk about, we've thrown around a variety of numbers regarding revenue. Now, it sounds like, from the information that's been prevented, presented to us,
that we collect is not accurate, is not necessarily coming from the sale. Can you hear me? Yeah.
Yes, we can.
Sale of permits, but from the penalties associated with those who are parking on the street and getting tickets. Because I've heard a variety of numbers and I've heard a wash, but all of a sudden $500,000 in a budgetary deficit. And as we all know in government, it is poor practice to fill budgetary gaps from punitive measures, especially when those who are being penalized generally in this village are those can least afford it. So I, so I would like to, yeah, I look forward to hearing, or to further evaluating this. But if we, and also I'd like to ask all of you on the board, I'm probably the only renter on this board at.
Nope.
No? Oh, but.
Go ahead.
If any of you have to walk more than a block to park, that's what a lot of people who live in this village who do not have parking have to do because if there is not a lot, they have to walk up to two blocks. And I, I'm not sure if this is accurate Bart, or further, in order to park a vehicle. We're talking young, I mean, that, we want to talk about safety, we want to talk about accessibility, we want to talk about a whole variety of things. So if we're not willing to look at some on-street parking, especially for those who need it the most, I would ask my fellow board members, start parking, parking three blocks away on a daily basis and see how convenient it is and how, it's, it's really not that fun. And then also about the streets getting congested, sure, sure. I can't remember who mentioned this earlier. But if people do have a problem, if, if we allow more parking and some people want to park from their house and have to walk on the, I don't know how many of you have lived in high-density areas. I have lived in a variety of very large cities. You adjust. So anyway, so I'm in support of changes. And I also don't agree with charging as much as we're, why again, would we penalize those to fill any gaps, $30, whatever, $20? Milwaukee is, what did you say again Bart, for, for six months or a year, like $100?
$55 for the year.
$55 for one whole year. So if we are gonna look at, at charging people, and, and I also agree, we don't need to preserve all these parking lots and also the developers. I, boo hoo, I'm sorry if someone's not gonna pay $120 to park underground or they'd rather park on the street. But, all right, that's all I have.
So, Brin, can I go after trustee Bachhorst?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I 100% agree with her. I have been working on parking for five years. It's been one of my, one of mine and her biggest initiatives. It is a huge disparity in our community. It punishes the renters with the lower incomes. It punishes people of color and it, it makes people feel inferior if they don't have a garage or a driveway. And I can tell you, employees also, I've been approached by employees who also feel inferior. And there, when I was public safety chair my first year on the board, five years ago, we had this discussion and I remember the older people coming out and saying to me bluntly, out loud, "We don't want, we don't know who those cars belong to." That is a racist statement. I have no problem with people parking on my street. And I feel if we are true on this board to integration, we need to allow on-street parking because it is one of the biggest barriers in Shorewood. Only because I've gone through this for five years and I know the reasons that people do not want those people on their streets. Has nothing to do with aesthetics, it looks bad, oh, it's too crowded. I can't, you know, I have to walk too far if it's not right in front of my house. It is literally all I've heard in my time was, I don't want other people here. And to me, I grew up as a planner and there's a thing called SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And one of the things that SEPTED promoted was eyes on the street. And eyes on the street mean, the more people walking dogs at night, the more safe your neighborhood is. The more people parking and getting out of their cars, the more safe your neighborhood is because there's more eyes on the street. And that is in millions of planning books. So the fact that, I've waited this long to say that, I can tell you, I 100% support on-street parking in the village of Shore. There is absolutely no reason, streets are for driving and parking. We don't own those streets. Those are public streets. No resident owns the street in front of them.
Do you want to weigh in on alternate sides, residence permit and fees?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Do you want to weigh in on alternate side parking, residence permits, limits and fees?
Sure. I think alternative side is great if possible. Sometimes it's not possible because sometimes there's only one side of the street that is viable. And Leanne would know that because we already have alternative sides. So I leave that up to our DPW director. I also feel like permit fees, whatever the fee is, it needs to be more than our lots. Because who wants to pay $75 to park in a lot and walk five blocks when you can park in front of your house for 50? So I also think we should get rid of all these private lots. If you talk to DPW, and I could be wrong, but this is what I've heard in the past, it's a headache. If we allow on-street parking, there's no reason to be managing private lots. We have enough spots. So we have our own parking lots that are 24 hours and then we have on-street parking. We get rid of responsibility. So I can't fathom why we wouldn't do it. And, and the main reason.
Limit on permits per residence?
And the limit permits of residence, I do not agree with because it is very labor intense, hugely labor intense. We need to cut our budgets, not make them bigger. And so I spent four years talking with our staff and in order for people to say two per household, what about employees? Right? I mean, why do we care who parks on our street? If they're willing to pay the money, there's a reason they're paying the money. Either they're a caregiver, they're a nurse, we have an aging population, or they're employee at a bakery. I don't care. Nobody's gonna buy a permit in Shorewood unless they need one overnight. And so to me, it doesn't matter. Now, saying that, I would not, if we had 1,000 parking spaces on street, we only currently permit 50% of them for hardships and, and other things. I would start there. And if, if things go well, I'd start, I'd allow 60%. I'd allow 80% until we have a problem or overcrowding or, or we can't find spots anymore. I, I wouldn't start at permitting every single spot. And the last thing I would say is, I wouldn't touch the University RCA. I wouldn't touch it. I wouldn't allow overnight permits. I think that they are, they are their own square and they have it, they have it right. So the parking program to me, the university's a different animal. Don't permit all the spots available to start. Definitely permit spots on the street and make sure that they're cheaper than the lots. Definitely permit spots on the street and make sure that they're cheaper than the lots. Or, I'm sorry, make sure the lots are cheaper than the street. And then see how it goes. But the labor-intensive of two per household, if you take away the university section, the RCA, it's a square, if you take away that section, I really don't feel like we have a problem. And I can tell you, I've talked to Rebecca on this one, we've got to get less labor-intensive. It's just, we have a full-time staff member and two customer service people that spend an enormous amount of time because we do residency requirements. And moving forward in a, in tight budget times, we can't, we just can't afford it anymore.
Okay, Rosa, do you want to, should I give the chair to you or are you, what's your pleasure?
I'm good, that's all I needed to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ursink, please.
What'd you say?
I was going to ask Trustee Ursink, again, we're looking at, do you support overnight? Do you support alternate side parking, limit on residence permits and what you're feeling on the fee structure?
Thank you, Trustee Stoker Brand. You know, at the beginning of this conversation, I, I kind of felt that there is no way that, you know, unregulating on-street parking would, would be a reality. But by hearing with Trustee Bachhorst and Trustee, President Rozek, I think there, you know, there, there is something there. I'd love to continue this conversation, I think it's really important. I like to look at Shorewood as, as a role model for progressive community. And if, you know, if, if, if we can get to that point, that's great. You know, for the sake of time, I will just go through your questions here and kind of give you my, my feelings. Definitely, we need to revise the language for alternate side parking. It sounds like that's a must. You know, residency requirements, I would say no. I'd say if people are going to pay a fee to park on our streets, let's take that money. And then I would go for the forty, thirty, I think that's, you know, that makes the most sense with, through all the options. But with that said, I really would love to explore the concept of open parking.
Thank you, Trustee Ursink. Trustee Carpenter?
So I'll start with pricing. So I am in favor of the, moving to the forty, thirty. I do think keeping the, the immediate area near the university the same as they currently are, not changing that. I do think that we need to do some work to control the number of permits per residence. That being said, I do believe that if you have an opportunity to park somewhere other than on-street, you will. You know, that is sort of a last resort. But I do think having some ability to understand residencies and control the number of residents, number of permits per residence is something that we need to, we need to look into. I think we do need to update the language for alternate side parking. And then my other sort of bigger concept question, which is not really an answer to all of your questions, but I think I answered all the dialogue, is, you know, the landlords that are renting to, and, and making money off of people who are renting within our community, do we require them to provide permits? Because they are the ones that are profiting from our renters. And I think it would be nice if we say you have twenty-five people living in your, your building, that you provide twenty-five permits. And, and that's more of just a concept that I sort of thought about. And I don't know logistically how that process would happen with staff. But I just think, you know, we're penalizing the tenants and the landlords are the ones who are making money off of these tenants that are living there. And so if there's a way that we can have landlords provide permits for them, that's, that's something that I think is, that we need to think about as well.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Warren?
Thank you. Just, I've been making, making notes this entire time, so pardon me if I'm a little look-downy throughout my comments. I support offering overnight parking at the lowest cost possible. That said, I, I also support having no residency restrictions and no household restrictions. I would, I would make, I would open up as much as we could. You know, what, what, my reasoning behind that, you know, you know, what I'm thinking about is household, you, you have a lot of different types of households, you know, you have multi-generational households, you have a lot of different configurations. And I'd want to make, you know, I, I think that it would be nice to be able to not have the staff time and also be able to accommodate differently configured households. The one thing that's going through my mind is, you know, I'm wondering if, just trying to process all this, you know, does it make sense to even delay this to find a way to lower costs even further? I mean, one thing I'm not clear on, and, and again, it goes back to our earlier conversation with respect to long-range financial plan, I want to offer it at the lowest. But I also want to know what the impact is on our budget. Simply because, you know, we're going to have a challenging budgetary year. I mean, everyone has. And I just, I, I, I worry that, I don't want to have any unintended impacts. And frankly, on the, on the flip side, you know, if there was some way to creatively get lower, I would fully support that as well. I want to offer this at the lowest possible cost. Also, also support alternative side parking, or alternate side parking. Couple things there, I wonder what the signage impact would be there? I mean, we have to re-sign the entire village to accommodate that, so there would probably be some, some significant expense there. Also, I do wonder if we're going to have enough public comment on that. I mean, throughout, we haven't talked about alternate side parking. And I think there's some change management there, especially if you put it on the agenda for a week from now. So I think we want to look at that. And also finally, you know, we've, we've talked, I really appreciate the conversation we've had on equity here. I think this is a really great conversation. And I think as a board, we're all thinking alike that we want to consider equity and we want to consider those impacts. And I think we've got a great discussion on it, I wonder if we need more time to process that going forward. So you know, that's kind of what's going around in my head, I realize we're an hour before this meeting and I'm really excited about moving forward with this, I'm just trying to think of the best, most efficient way to get this right. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Leanne, do you have any, off the top of your head, putting you on the spot, if we went with the alternate side reconfiguration and we started this in January, approximate cost to redo the signage to Trustee Warren's point?
Off the top of my head, I do not have that answer, but we did that exercise a couple of months ago. And so I know that information was transferred to Bart. It's certainly something that we could convey, but I do not recall it off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you. I'll just quickly go through my own, I support the overnight parking, I support the alternate side changes to the code so we can make it happen. I do not see a need for the limit on permits per residence. And at this point, I would favor the staff recommendation on the fee. So I guess at this point, we need to decide if we're going to act tonight and is anybody ready to make a motion? I think the point of this was to get something moving forward. If we want to start on January one, it'd be nice to have the vote early in September because it is a significant change in, in village policy.
Trustee Stoker Brand?
Trustee Bachhorst?
Yeah, so just, this is not agendicized for, I know we're just supposed to give guidance to staff tonight. So, and I, I don't think I answered your questions, yes, let's change the, the, the language for the off-street, I mean, the alternate side parking. And I don't think that we need a limit per household as well. But I don't think that this is agendicized for a vote. So I guess what I would ask is if staff has enough direction at this point.
I can summarize what I believe I heard in terms of all of your responses to Trustee Stoker Brand's question. So I heard, yes, there's a desire to move forward with considering an update to allow for a permit for on-street. I heard, yes, clarify the alternate side language. I heard a majority consensus on not requiring household or residency limits. And then I heard a majority consensus on a lower fee, forty, thirty was discussed the most. So if that's what I heard correctly, I would prepare documents, the ordinance, the policy, the resolution to reflect that for consideration on Tuesday. At which point then you could motion to approve as submitted or amend as necessary. But we, yeah, we were hoping to at least get consensus direction on those particular points. They don't need to be in motions, I think we preferred for them to be motioned so that we would understand. But having gone around, unless I'm wrong on what I heard consensus-wise, that's what I would prepare.
Let's go around the table again then. Is, are you comfortable with this, Trustee Amenta?
Am I comfortable, what, what do you mean?
With the things that Bart said that he would put into, into a form for us to consider for approval at the next meeting?
I, you know, I, you know, this is, this is a huge, going to be a huge change. And I can guarantee you that there are many, many people in town who have no idea. I know we did this study, I know we had open houses, a lot of this discussion about this has been during COVID. I, I just feel like there's, there's a lot of people who pay no attention at all to anything, anything we do. And that we're talking about a real, a very big change in the village. I think there are unanticipated, there are going to be unanticipated changes in behavior that we are not even imagining right now. I think the fiscal analysis that Mark has done, which I really appreciate him doing, but you know, I think even he will admit that there are some assumptions in there that we really have no idea, we have no idea how many people are really going to want to be parking on the street. So as much as I want to open up parking, as much as I think it should be forty, thirty or even lower, if we are not limiting it by household, I can't vote for it. But you know, that's just me.
Okay, Trustee Bachhorst?
Yeah, I support it, I would also like to see how much money we actually, the revenue comes from fees and fines versus the other things. And I know we have the amount that we get by renting these out, but the administrative costs and everything lined out, so that's an accurate thing. But completely agree, I'd like to see the permit lowered. Again, I don't, I think it's a little cost prohibitive, we're charging a thousand people to subsidize this whole program or fewer, or whatever it is, so that would be one thing. But if that, in absence of that, I'd like at least us to see moving in the right direction. So yes, thank you. And if we're not taking a vote, I'm, I might be signing off here because my daughter's going to college tomorrow.
Trustee Carpenter? Trustee Carpenter?
Sorry, I was trying to get there. Um, you know, I, I am from a very urban area with a lot of really difficult parking challenges. So having no controls does make me a little bit nervous. I know that we had somewhat of a similar, you know, experience during COVID. I don't know that it was totally real, regular life. And so I do just, I have some concerns about residents and quantity of residents and residency requirements, so.
Okay, Trustee Ursink?
I'm not quite sure what we're doing here at this point, I voiced what I thought, what I would support. I'm, you know, what do you, what do you guys?
I was just looking for feedback with Bart's going to, you know, describe what he was going to do and I thought it would go around the table one more time.
My residency, I'm not in favor of residency, I'm in favor of alternate sides and I'm in favor of the lowest possible fee structure, if any.
Okay, thank you. And obviously, we will take a vote on each of those issues, I think that's the understanding we're leaving Bart with, correct? Trustee Warren?
Yeah, I was, I, I am comfortable with what Bart, with Bart's summary. That, that sound, that reflects my points of view, I'm comfortable moving forward with, with overnight parking without residency and household restrictions, the lowest price point, and incorporating alternate sides. So, yeah, sounds good to me.
So I think that's the direction you need Bart. And then obviously, if people feel at the next meeting that they want to deal with the residency permit issue, we can deal with it through amendments and then the vote, we'll see with how the vote lands.
Correct, I have, I have clear direction on what to prepare for the September eighth packet. So you can communicate that as you need to, to whoever else you need to talk about it. But I'll prepare that for consideration next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. And I think that the important thing to remember here is, because this is sort of like moving a mountain in Shorewood, we're going to give, I think most of us feel like we want to give this a shot in some way and we just, we have to start with a step somewhere. And we, we have the option to revisit this later. But the sooner we get started moving with the big step of approving the overnight parking, the sooner we can move on to the other things and keep moving the ball forward. Okay, is there anything else for this evening?
No.
Okay, is there a move, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Bachhorst?
Second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Ursink, go in favor?
Hi.
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 Be opposed? Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Good to see you guys.
Likewise.
Thank you so much.